Good morning, everyone. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, November 18th. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? There are none in the audience. Do we have any online?
None, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We will move then to the approval of bills and vouchers.
I'll move to approve the bills and vouchers.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Approval of minutes from October 28th.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 28th, 2025.
And I guess we have "and" November 4th. We can do them together if you...
All right, "and" also November 4th, 2025.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And it's a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Our next item, our 8:35 item, is our State Auditor final audit findings presentation, and we have online with us, we have Karen from the State Auditor's office. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm Karen Stackin. I am one of the Audit Directors with the Office of the State Auditor, and I'm just here to present the findings from the 2024 Clay County Financial Statement Audit. So the county did receive an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that is the best opinion you can receive, so it's the one that you want to have. During our testing, we did identify three findings in total. The first one relates to internal control over financial reporting. That was identified in the report as finding 2024-001, and it's related to segregation of duties. So in that finding, we just noted that several of the county's departments that collect fees lack proper segregation of duties. These departments generally will have one person that does... They're responsible for like the billing, the collecting, the recording, and the depositing of receipts, and sometimes they're also involved in recording or reconciling bank accounts. Just having all of those duties concentrated in one person could affect the ability of county employees to be able to identify any misstatements that could occur in a timely period. And so we recommend that the county board and management be aware of the lack of segregation of accounting functions, and where possible, try to implement procedures to ensure that staff are implementing the internal controls. So that was the finding related to the financial internal controls. And then we also did what's called a single audit, where we audit some of the federal programs. And so for this year, the programs that we audited were the 21.027, which is the COVID-19 Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, the Child Support Services, which is 93.563, and 93.778, which is the Medicaid Cluster. So we did identify two findings, and those were both related to the Medicaid Cluster. Both of these actually related to the eligibility portion, and the findings are similar. So the first one is related to... There's two different programs that are used to determine eligibility. One is Metz, and the other is MAXIS. And so the first one is related to the Metz program. So there, we took a sample of 40 case files, and we looked at the case files and compared the information in the case file to the information in the Metz system. And there, we had one case file where it lacked documentation for citizenship, and one case file where it didn't properly document the participant's income. And then, when we got to the MAXIS side of it, there, we did test 40 cases that were under the MAXIS program, and there we had a couple of additional findings. There, we had one applicant's application wasn't processed for 107 days. Normally, they should be done within about 45. We had six participants where their citizenship verification method didn't match the documentation that was in the file. We had one case file where it didn't document the participant's income correctly, and then we had three case files where it didn't document their assets correctly. So the effect that this could have is that the lack of the updated information in MAXIS or the lack of verification of eligibility requirements could allow program participants to receive benefits when they're not eligible. And so just for the future, we recommend that the county implement additional procedures to provide assurance that the documentation needed to support the eligibility is properly input and updated in the system, and that program personnel follow up on issues in a timely manner, and that the county consider providing some further training to personnel. So those were the only findings that we had in the audit this year.
Yeah, we do have a question, Karen. Commissioner Mojo?
Okay.
Thanks, Karen, for walking us through this. So my understanding, as part of that program that these folks are updating, sometimes information is automatically uploaded into a piece. So are we... Are these program findings areas where, in which old information could have been uploaded into that information as they're walking through it, or is that something separate?
So typically, what the findings that we had would be related to when they'd have to do like redeterminations, and people would have to bring in their information, and then it would have to get updated into the system. So in a couple of cases, they were just data input errors in a couple of places. Some of the documentation wasn't in the file to support what was in either the Metz or the MAXIS system. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Were there any further questions?
We're good, Karen.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for your time today, and also thank you to the staff that worked really hard in putting the audit report together and getting us the information that we needed.
Yeah, thank you. Karen, when I sat through the earlier report that you had provided to us, there were some comparisons to our cash accounts and our investments and all those types of things. Part of your routine report that you submit through your audit. And I did have a... I do have a couple of follow-up questions on a couple of those that I would like to do offline with you, if that's all right. It's just...
Yes.
I just want some clarification on a couple of values that we're reporting.
Okay. Yes, you could either send me an email, or we could set up a call after the meeting, if you'd like.
Sure. I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for Karen? Other than that, I mean, going to Lori and your staff there, Stacy, it's... We've had just continuously very good audit results, and I... In terms of some of those issues regarding the small departments, it is very difficult for us to... And from a... You also got to weigh things from a cost-benefit standpoint to have multiple people working on a $500 account or something, you know? So it's... Some of those things, you know, the amount of people that you can have working on something, it doesn't... It's not cost-effective to do. We put some... Have to put some trust in, but then again, the amount of money is so insignificant that I don't think it's a concern on our part. But again, I think overall, your overall... The unmodified is what we always like to see, and Lori keeps pointing to Stacy over there, that she's the one in charge here, so congratulations to everybody else. And I think the areas that you did talk about, we have spoken with our Social Service Department in some of those areas, on some of those findings, and we'll deal with it. But again, later on, I just want to also point out that later today, we're going to also be discussing the outdated software that we're... That all these people have to use and uploading and all of this stuff. And it goes to our great argument that we're having, going to have with the state legislature right now, trying to give us software that's more in line with the current century. So hopefully, some of that will be resolved with the better software that we're looking to get, so. So with that, I thank you, Karen, and we'll look forward to next year.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We are early for our...
Mr. Chair, we could... I could do eight and... Eight and/or nine, if it works for the board.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do eight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, for your consideration, is a document of Clay County Board of Commissioners' operating guidelines. What this document would do is really establish a structure and the procedures that you guys already are following, memorialize some of the non-written policies that we've had in some different areas. And really, I think our goal is defining the goals, the roles and responsibilities. As commissioners, this isn't brought about because you're not doing something. In fact, I would say it's being brought about because of the great work that you do. And again, as I've shared with you, I've received multiple confidence on how you guys carry your meetings. And so we're just looking to memorialize this. Many of the items that are part of this aren't just items that we do, but are statutes that are required by county boards. And again, we're just looking to put these guidelines forward for some efficiency transparency. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yes, and I can direct this to Mr. Melton or you, but our attorney has had a chance to review this. I see that it's very clearly delineated with reference to Minnesota statute in much of this material that we have here. We had it in front of us at PIC, and I've had a chance to read it totally from end to end, and I think it is an extremely useful document. And it, again, it's nothing trying to hem us in. It's actually showing where the lanes are for the performance of our duties under state law, so I think it's very well done, and I'm grateful for the effort that was put into it.
Anybody else have comments?
Yes, Commissioner Bear.
I also concur with Commissioner Ebinger. If I would have been handed this as the newest member on here right before I applied or, you know, filled out paperwork to run for this office, I don't know if I would have. But no, it's very well done, and yeah. I would appreciate being handed this earlier, yeah. So this is very nicely done. I think it'll help out the next people that sit on this board tremendously, so.
I think a lot of it... I think a lot of it might have, you know, as you said, it goes to the involvement that we all do. I don't... You know, it's important for everybody to understand that this is a guideline, and I, for one, am somebody in an elected position who I need to know where my lanes are, but I also need to know that I have the ability to speak up when I need to speak up. And, you know, and guidelines are not going to prevent me from speaking up if I think it's important to do so. So, yeah, so I think, you know, from the... I thought back to this, and I think we, in our diversion board of authority, we did something similar to this with our diversion board, too, was just kind of... Yeah, just so people understand the whole process, so. Anything else?
I would make a motion that we approve the Clay County Board of Commissioners' operating guidelines.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Krabunov. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. My question in this, my understanding generally, the committee reports is when commissioners are reporting on that, that's also needed for per diem reimbursement. And so does that need to be reflected in any of the guidelines, or is that done earlier in...
We can make sure that that's clear. We'll make an addition.
I thought that was...
Well, I don't... It's not in the committee reports, commissioner updates. I did look in the compensation piece, but it's not mentioned on reporting.
I would accept that change into my motion if... Mr. Krabunov is...
If I... Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And you're looking at maybe amending, just a friendly amendment to include Commissioner Mojo's. And I'm just wondering if I look at page 130 of 145 under Board Committees, I wonder if we could just expand that?
I didn't know if that needed to be on Board Committees or if that needed to be on committee reports. You know, maybe with that, it would be whatever the term...
But maybe under the Board Committees, it could be stated that, you know, the committee reports will be provided to the board. I think that would cover it then. I think that's a good...
I'd accept that in as an amendment to my motion.
Okay. Does that meet your approval? I think we just take...
I don't over words, but do you want to put the word in must?
Well, I... You know, and again, it goes to the statutes that require us to report, so in order to be eligible for the per diem. So if we can just ask Steve to put that proper, modify that language in there.
Will do.
All right, Paul, did that meet your agreement for the friendly... All right. Any further discussion?
Just to follow up to your comment earlier, this is nothing new. This is what the board has practiced for years. I think it's important to have clarification for future board members and some of us that even have been on here longer, but also for the public to know.
Yeah, and I... You know, the one thing that I did notice in here that under the role of the presiding officers, and it talks about the board chair being the one who would call for a work group. You know, when we had some discussions, and I think back to our discussions that we had with the diversion board, and if you... It seems to me that you could... You might have four commissioners who have an interest in wanting to have a work group, and you might have a board chair who's adamantly opposed to that. You know, I think we should... There should maybe be something in it that says a board chair or...
Majority?
You know, well, you can't even get into majority, because then you would have been... But I think if you... Any other two commissioners?
I almost wonder, though, is that something that, in a point of contention, a full board could act on in their meeting and call for and vote for in a situation like you're talking about?
Well, I guess there's... My only... Part of the reason why we do have work groups is that we like to be able to maybe spend more time and expand on a certain topic than we would in a normal group setting. And so all I'm saying is just the ability to... Or how you... Or who has the authority to call the work group.
That's what I'm saying, then. If the board chair refuses, the board can act to call... You can create a motion to call a work group at a...
But then we'd be going against the guidelines.
But you said the guidelines are guidelines.
All right, okay. I'm good with that, then. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right. Let's see. Who do we have coming for... When will be here? Okay. Do you want to... So do you have budget stuff, Steve? Do you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the last week or so, we've been working with Public Health and Social Services just to make their final adjustments for what their grant amounts are. We did see some adjustments that took our levies down from 4.93 to 4.86 with those adjustments. And so that, we did see a minor decrease there. We did, I think I shared last week, that we did meet with Troy, Lori, at the detox number. We did... We did... We've seen some trends. Again, we have been open for about a year. We've seen increases at the facility from a population standpoint, starting in April. One of the challenges that we've had is, as I shared, I think in the past, that we have hit our capacity already several times. And so the part for Troy is he has had to staff up from a staffing standpoint, a little bit higher than what he had potentially anticipated at the beginning. So there's been some additional costs that have come there. Having said that, in talking with Lori, we feel like if it were the board's wishes, that we would be able to have additional revenue or anticipate additional revenue of about $100,000. That would, if the board's wishes were to address that, we could take the $100,000 off the... What that number, the funding number from Quinn's budget that gets transferred to the detox facility.
Is that factored into the 4.86 or not?
That is not. Mr. Bear.
Is that a conservative number?
It is a conservative number from the standpoint that if the population continues from April moving forward, that it would be a conservative number.
I think I would add it in.
I think that's great.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Great news.
Do we have anything else?
I have one thing. I had a director reach out to me from 4G Advisory Group LLC. They are an audit group that goes around and audits companies to see where they can save money. He reached out to me and said he would be willing to look at Clay County as a whole, and it takes about four to six weeks. I've mentioned this to Steve earlier. And four to six weeks to see if there's any savings in the county, in any department, with anybody. And the way we would pay them is with the savings, they would save $200,000. We'd split that 50/50, just seeing if that's an option, if we want to go down this path. I've mentioned it to Steve earlier. We had a brief conversation on it. I'm just wondering if we want to go down that path and audit the whole county and see if there's real savings anywhere? We wouldn't have to pay anything if they find nothing. The company's... The main... One of the main people's out of more ahead of here.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, commissioners, as was mentioned, we had a brief conversation. I don't know a lot about it. My understanding is the majority of the work that they do is in private for the public. And so, you know, I think that, you know, any time the fee is based off findings, it makes me a little bit nervous. I think we just got done with our audit from the state. I know that... I do know that Anna has been looking at different programs to find if there's more of a... Necessarily, an audit, but an efficiencies, looking at departments. You know, we do that, I feel, fairly well as a county, but certainly something that we can look into.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate the perspective and the conversation that Commissioner Bear had. I think it's important to bring that forward. You know, it seems as though you are implementing some things in the leadership group with Clay County to make sure we're doing just that, auditing components, that there might be redundancies or areas for effectiveness. I will say that AMC is in the process of implementing something quite similar that has more to do with what are the state mandating components, and then how does the county look to reflect and see where the cost drivers for each specific county are with that. It seems to me something like that would be a better fit once we have identified those specifically to look at where there could be potential savings.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, again, I have some concerns when the individual, the company that's doing this, their fee is based on what they find, particularly when they're private sector-based. There's a lot of things in government that they may identify as wasteful that are actually requirements and mandates. And we could end up having to litigate who's paying what if we don't agree with what their identified cuts are. If AMC is looking at doing something similar, I'm all for jumping on that. But I don't know. Not questioning their integrity, it's questioning their perspective.
It's my count... Yeah.
Mr. Krabunov.
I just... My response to it, I think it's... I'll put it this way. I wouldn't be in favor of it. I just feel I trust the leadership that exists. I think they've shown even where we started at, a figure of a levy at 12 and bringing it now down to 4.86 and perhaps some more. We have supervisors, administration, that are all fine-tuning their processes they go along. And we know that certain things will come into play that might be identified, and then all of a sudden, the state comes out with something else, or we find new ways of strategy between departments like Public Health and Social Services, where they make those adjustments within. I think we have very good management control.
All right. Okay.
Just a topic.
Thank you.
All right, we are very close to our... Matt, do you want to start getting yourself set up for... All right, my watch says 9 o'clock, so we are ready to have the public hearing for Steve and Teresa Opto. Request for platted subdivision.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? The hearing is open. Good morning, Matt. Opposed, the same sign. The hearing is open. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yes, this is a request for, uh, a platted subdivision, the, the final plat, uh, for a one-block, two-lot, uh, subdivision, located on the east side of US Highway seventy-five, north of Ninetieth Avenue South, about, uh, one and a three-quarter mile south of, uh, Morehead's, um, urban, uh, planned urban growth area, and about three miles south of Morehead. Uh, zoning on this property, uh, base zoning is agricultural general. There is a little bit of floodplain fringe, uh, that would be on, uh, primarily on Lot Two. So this would be Lot Two. This is Lot One. And so property information, it's about sixty-six acres. Land use right now is currently agriculture. Uh, there's no structures on the property. Um, looking at the crop equivalency rating of this, this would be prime farmland, kind of ranges from sixty-seven, um, to seventy-three, uh, which is, once you get into the seventies, that's, that's good. There aren't any wetlands, um, on the property. It'd be two lots. One lot would be ten acres. Um, and then this is north, just so you know, going this way, so seventy-five's down here. Um, and then the other lot would be fifty-three point seven-three acres. Wouldn't be any internal roads. There'd be a direct access connection to US Highway seventy-five, and they do have restrictive covenants as well. Uh, later this evening, the Planning Commission will hear an interim use permit request for a concrete-ready mix plant to be sited on Lot One. Uh, the concrete-ready mix plants are permitted as an interim use in this zoning district, so, we do allow them in the egg general zoning district as an interim use. There was not an interim use permit application for Lot One formally submitted until after that October first Planning Commission meeting, when the Planning Commission heard the preliminary plat. Uh, just to give you a best, some background on township action, uh, September eighth, they did consider a request from, uh, an applicant different from this, uh, applicant for the plat to rezone and plat the same property. The township did deny those requests. Uh, and then on September twenty-third, they held, held, heard a request from the landowners for this plat. Um, it was approved, but the township did voice a strong opposition to citing of a concrete plant or other industrial use at this location. And the reasons they gave were loss of farmland, neighborhood concerns, concerns about traffic safety, uh, and potential groundwater use. Uh, we have received another, uh, number of public comments, uh, about this plat and the proposed use. Uh, there are noise, dust, vibration concerns, uh, water use, so quantity and quality concerns. Highway safety, just being a sixty mile per hour two-lane road. Uh, there's been some comments about long-term planning and zoning, so having an industrial use at this location disrupting progression and undermining long-term planning at this location. Uh, cumulative impact, so recent, um, commercial industrial development impacts have already been observed on US Highway seventy-five from, from the public. Um, county should be protecting rural character. Uh, the desire for development along this corridor matching the US, uh, eighty-one corridor in North Dakota, just across the river. Um, there is a comment about industrial development limiting, limiting the growth of Morehead to the south. Uh, there's also a petition online, um, opposing the concrete plant, not the plat. Um, a hundred and thirty-one plus signatures, um, for that. Uh, we did additional comments. Uh, MinDOT did require an access permit site plan. Um, they don't, at this time, think there's a turn lane or traffic study required for the proposed site, um, and use. And just to comment that there's about sixteen hundred forty-six vehicles traveling daily on, on US Highway seventy-five. For the proposed use, I think they're looking at potentially at, at a peak, maybe adding fifty trucks a day to that. Um, but significantly less off, off peak. Um, the Planning Commission did look at our, how this plating request relates to the comprehensive and transportation plan goals and objectives. So looking at our goal to recognize and protect egg character of Clay County and protecting prime egg soils from commercial industrial residential development. Um, it would take about ten acres of prime farmland out of egg production. Uh, just in context, we have in Clay County about two hundred ninety-seven, six hundred, thousand six hundred acres of prime farmland if drained, and about a hundred and fifty-four thousand two hundred forty acres of prime farmland. And they looked at the goal, uh, that we encourage in just, commercial industrial development that is in harmony with the egg and rural character of Clay County. Wanting value added egg, commercial industrial development, and egg service center areas and along transportation corridors and hubs. It would, this proposed plat, you know, would allow for some of these uses, would be situated on US Highway seventy-five, which is a minor arterial in Clay County, so it's one of our major, major roadways. And then looking at, um, our goal to encourage in commercial industrial development that is in harmony with the egg and rural character of Clay County, and to avoid or mitigate against, um, commercial or industrial development that increases the potential for land use conflicts with rural residential or egg uses. Uh, just noting where the closest residence is. It's about a quarter mile to the north. And then there's also a residence that's approximately point four miles to the west of the proposed plat as well. And then the Planning Commission did make the recommendation to authorize preparation of the final plat and sent to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And one thing I should say with the Planning Commission, um, when they were considering this plat, um, they weren't considering it for specifically a, I think it was in the back of everyone's mind that it was going to be for a concrete-ready mix plant, but they weren't considering it, it as, as part of the plat. Um, just because a concrete-ready mix plant was already be, would already be allowed as an interim use permit in that zoning district. Any other que, any questions for me at all?
So, so what was brought before the Planning Commission? Uh, there was no discussion, uh, through that process of a concrete plant?
There was, there was some, there was some discussion about that, because that was essentially, but the decision was not necessarily based on that.
All right. Any other questions of the board at this time? All right, public comment. Do we have the applicant here? Does an applicant care to speak?
Good morning. Uh, my name is John Lowry. I'm with Lowry Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of the landowner, Steve Opatrell, uh, who's also a local resident here. So, um, Steve and his wife own this property, and they have an individual who would like to purchase ten acres. And as, uh, Mr. Jacobson said, uh, there is an intention for a concrete-ready mix plant, and that application has been applied for, uh, as an interim use permit, and will be heard this evening by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I think, um, I'd just like to define that what we're here today is not the use that's proposed on this property, but the ability to plat it into a ten-acre parcel, the ability for Mr. Opatrell to create a ten-acre parcel that is sold without an interim use permit, uh, as permitted uses underneath the egg zoning. And, uh, that's an agreement, you know, that's an understanding to, between two private parties. And a later discussion, I believe, on what the uses are going to be, or can be, on that property. And we'll go through the proper procedures and channels to, uh, to obtain those approvals. So, um, you know, we can certainly get into some of the details of the, the concerns and, uh, uh, questions that have been raised about this. We'd be happy to. Um, I, I don't know that this is the right forum for that. As I said, it's, it's, this is about creating the ten-acre parcel, not the proposed use at this time, so.
Yeah, that, that, so, I, and that, Matt, that's my question. So you were saying that that if, if this zoning is, is approved, or, or what we're doing here today is approved, that the concrete plat would, would automatically fall within? Or are we making a change for the zoning?
So, Mr. Chair, there is no zoning change. Concrete-ready mix plants and asphalt batch plants are currently allowed as interim uses under the current zoning.
Okay.
Um, the, the connection here would be, um, with the plat being for a commercial or industrial use. Um, I mean, the connection might be, would, would it be likely that the ready-mix plant permit would go forward without the plat? I, I don't know. Um, because there wouldn't be a change in ownership. It would have to be like a lease situation. Um, just speaking to concrete plants that are in either our, um, agricultural general zoning district or our resource protection aggregate zoning district. Um, most of them are, I mean, some of them are on one-year interim use permits. Some are on five, some are on ten, um, but they're typically, um, tied to specific jobs or the potential for jobs. Um, they get taken down, they get broken apart, they get moved around. Um, there are a couple that are more permanent, yes. Um, but one of the reasons why it's allowed as an, as an interim use, uh, in the egg general zoning district is for that, that reason.
So what's the purpose of them going to the Planning Commission tonight?
That would be for that interim use permit for the...
That's still required.
That would still be required. Yep. No matter what, that would have to be required. So, um, even if this, without this plat, if they were seeking to just put the concrete-ready mix plant on this sixty-six acre, sixty-six acre parcel, they would still need to go for an interim use permit, and that would, that, that would be the path that they would have to take for that.
This is lauding off ten acres that would be sold off and be...
Right. Yeah. But the, but by, by doing that, they're, they're not guaranteed the interim.
No.
Until they go through the Planning Commission process.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I'm trying to put this puzzled. I was trying to read this earlier, and I, I thought, I'm gonna wait and ask my questions here.
Chair Campbell, great questions. It, it's not a, a simple manner, but it, it's part of the process to, to work through. And, and that's, you know, we've been in conversation with the county staff and just working through the process here. So, it, creating this parcel so that he has the ability to sell it i- is the first step. And I think he has the right to subdivide his parcel here, fronting Highway seventy-five, uh, create this ten-acre parcel.
Well, when I, you know, when I, when I look at the, you know, I'm just, from my standpoint, when I, when I look at the subdividing and the, and, you know, I, I think landowners have rights. You know, and, and for us to say that we're, we're not gonna split something up, because it's prime farmland, it's also privately owned. And I think we, you know, from my standpoint, I think owners have, you know, maybe that's their, maybe that's their future finances is based on the ability to sell that ten acres in a split fashion. So I, from that standpoint, I, you know, I, I would, I would side from that standpoint with, and I'm just, I'm just talking about the prime ag land argument here, that we, you know, that I don't want to say that somebody can't sell their land because of prime ag land.
Matt, could you, uh, distinguish the difference between interim use permit and, uh, conditional use permit? I know the difference, just so the board knows the difference.
Yeah, so, that's it. Um, Commissioner Campbell and, Chair Campbell and Commissioner Bear, uh, a conditional use permit is essentially a, a land right. So, um, if a conditional use permit is granted, it runs with the land. And, um, the only way that it could be terminated or revoked is if the conditions of the permit are violated. Uh, interim use permits are not a land right. Um, they're either tr, their expiration is triggered by either an event or a specific deadline or point in time. With batch plants, it's ninety-nine point nine percent of them have, um, specific deadlines. It's not an event that, that necessarily, whether it be one year, five year, ten year. And also with, with that too, if the conditions of the interim use permit are violated, that, um, would be a grounds for a revoking of, of the permit.
So with that being said, even if this does become a concrete plant, in five years, it could be back into farmland. So it runs with the applicant, not with the land. So that's, there's a difference there.
That's, can be time specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if there's ever an ownership change as well, um, that permit would automatically need to be renewed.
When the, uh, when the, the Planning Commission, they, they held a public hearing.
For the plat, correct.
The plat.
Yep.
And in that public hearing process, the, the notice had no information regarding what is now the intent of a part, part of that land, right?
It was, it was just about the plat, correct?
Just about the plat. And so the, you know, from, from that standpoint, you know, the, and again, I think I'm, I'm trying to separate the difference between what we're doing in, in terms of should we or should we not allow this to go from one lot to two?
Sure.
That's what we're here for today.
Yeah.
I don't want to get ahead of the Planning Commission in terms of a hearing tonight, because, you know, obviously, based on what you've said, there's, there's many people that are opposed to this. And did they have the ability to raise that opposition at that previous Planning Commission meeting when they, when some of them may not have known what was the intent? This time they will, right? Isn't it? So what's on the Planning Commission tonight, is it about the concrete plant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct. And yeah, concerns were raised at the, um, at the Planning Commission meeting, a lot of the concerns that I conveyed.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is that there might be others who weren't aware based on the previous public hearing notification.
Correct. Yes.
About, about the concrete plant.
Yeah, correct.
That's, that's, that's the issue that I have there.
Chair Campbell, if I may.
Yes.
You know, it, we're, we're not trying to be, it, it was a question of what you do first, and we applied for the interim use permit to make sure that it was known and that there weren't, you know, we're not trying to go behind anybody's back. We understand the concerns of the neighbors and, and, um, you know, want to work through the process as it's supposed to work. So I think, I think, as you said, the opportunity is there for, to raise those concerns and properly go through the process. We could have held off on this application and went through this morning, and then applied and been heard in a month or whatever, but, you know, to not try and, you know, we were trying to be forthright with our process.
Well, I apologize if I gave the impression that something was being done
No, 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 no.
underhandedly here, because that's not, that's not at all what I was
Yeah.
getting at here, but, um,
All right. We, we'd appreciate the consideration with the understanding, you know, it's fully well-known that, that there's going to be consideration tonight. I think this is a separate process that also needs to occur, so we would appreciate the support of creating the ten-acre parcel, understanding that there might be implications for what happens tonight, so.
All right. Uh, any other public comments?
Thank you.
Come on up and you state your name, please, and...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Dan Moore. I live at eighty forty-six Fourteenth Street South. I would be on the northeast corner of that property right across the road. When you talked about ten, as he, if I can just do, keep this short, but he applied for a permit for thirteen buildings previously, and at that time, there was talk of a concrete batch plant possibly going in there. I was told that that had been dropped. Since then, I've received no notices that this was going to come in. I found out from the neighbors there that this was coming up, so I was a little disappointed there. When he says this doesn't lead to the, that it's a separate meeting or whatever, it does lead to the possibility of the batch plant. And, um, on a separate issue, and, um, when his first forty acres were plotted and they were going to put concrete and dirt and other things on that property, he said that there would be, you know, a little bit of concrete stored there, some dirt and some clay, and, and that's fine, but you know, now, he said that there would be like maybe three days a year of, uh, concrete cut, crushing. Well, this last year, there was a month, month and a half of it. The piles got so high that I called just to see how high they were going to get, because I shoot across that property before it was there to get my wifi. And I never got a response back. I just, so, once, once this stuff goes into play, things happen.
things happen all the time that, um, are kinda brought in and it's just, um, it's just not good. When they did the substation by my place last summer, two summers ago, um, they actually took the black dirt off and hauled it over to their site. And not just his trucks, but the gravel trucks and everything else literally destroyed that road. They pushed my road out. Now, instead of going up at a taper, it comes up like this, cause the road got pushed out from so much. So you start getting all those trucks and the equipment and everything and it just, not only the valuation of your property, but roads and everything around it just get beat up, destroyed. So I have, yes, it will go to later tonight and I will be back again, but I have some pretty big concerns about this. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Well, I might answer to the first part of your statement, cause we had talked about those subdivisions in there and, and when we said it was going away, I guess my intention was communicating that it had gone away for those parcels, the possibility is what I meant.
Right, and, and to my understanding, you know, I'm not against people, he owns the property. Put thirteen condos on there, whatever, you know, it's up against the highway and sometimes when things get built, the condos, you can talk to the people or whatever and they can make it look neat and decent, I understand that, but most of the time you get out in the country and you get condos or whatever and there's junk piled all around, all over. And you guys don't get to see it, but the people that live there see it and work around it, so. I'm not trying to stop them from doing business, but at the same time, trying to protect what I've been there for a long time. I grew up there, I've been there since sixty-six, so. Thank you. Any other comments?
Dale Schofeld, ninety-two sixteen Fourteenth Street South. I also have lived on the property since seventy-three. And we're just so against this. It's just so much more noise and trucks coming by. And he's talking, uh, fifty more trucks a day coming out on seventy-five. He didn't say that they're gonna be turning against traffic, stopping traffic on seventy-five to turn into their property. There's no turn lanes. And then, like Joe said about the cement factory or the grinding of cement last year, that went on forever. And they had track holes out there, it's just clinking, they're making noise and beeping all day long. And I'm outside a lot and it just bothers you. And then you got the water issues. We have a couple different neighbors that have ran out of water and had to re-drill wells this year, so where's this water going? How long is it gonna be there? And then, um, Ninetieth Avenue, it's a cut across from County Road ten and I live right on Ninetieth Avenue. And it's, that's the gateway to gravel. You know they're gonna be coming down this little gravel road with their trucks. They were when they redid the substation. It was just constant trucks going by and it's a narrow road. If you met them, you had to stop and literally stop and pull over, cause trucks weren't moving over. They just fly right on by you. And then, well, obviously it's awesome farmland and I am a farm laborer, so I am for that. Which I know you, you have your opinion on that too. Well, then you got the beeping and the, when they dump their trucks, you know, they pull ahead and bang their boxes to get their truck empty. You hear that all day long. I'm, I'm four tenths of a mile away. I was the one that was four tenths a mile away from this. And it's, it's just not what we really want. I have several neighbors that voiced the same opinion. They couldn't make it here today. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Matt, I have a question for you. Um, a number of years ago, there was somebody who wanted to, a business that wanted to do something on Highway seventy-five south. And MinDOT required a turning lane. Is there, has, what's MinDOT's, uh, discussion on this been?
So I did reach out to MinDOT, excuse me, and, sorry. And basically what they told me was just based on what they have received from the applicant for the concrete ready mixed plant that, um, and, and this plat, um, that they wouldn't require a traffic study or a turn lane, just based on the-
They would not?
They would not. Their main concerns were just about the shoulder paving on the access.
I agree. I thought that we, it seemed, Morehead Marine seems to-
Yep.
Come up. In my brain, I think the discussion was with Morehead Marine and-
That's what it was.
And MinDOT did think that that would cause significant effects to seventy-five. And that's where I, I also, you know, I, I do live down there, so. I, you know, I do have concerns with those trucks pulling out without MinDOT having some sort of turn lane requirement.
It just seems that, did, did somebody say fifty a day, fifty trucks?
That was the, the peak, um, at the peak. Um, typically, I think they were looking at maybe ten, ten a day.
And that speed limit there is sixty?
Yep.
Do you have, do you have any other comments from public?
My name is Laura Walker and I'm Canole, but I'm a Walker. And we, I have a five-generation farm there that-
Laura.
Did you wanna-
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Hold that down here. Um, it's been five generations of our family have been out there farming that land out there, so we have a lot of, um, legacy, I guess, and I feel like the idea of the growth of Morehead, I really would like it to reflect a lot of what's going on on the Fargo side as well and not to be so industrialized on this side. Um, there are concerns. I'm gonna speak for the Bannermans because they're, they live right there as well and it's their golden years. They're retired and now to have beeping and truck noise and I'm just for their safety and concern. I don't personally live out there. We have family members that do and that farm out there. But it's, it's kinda devastating to that area. It's not really what people have envisioned for that area. And same with the environmental concerns. Um, we just wanna respect and, and keep it, you know, to its true culture of the farming community that it is and honor that and so I know that that's not what's on the table right here and I know that, but it is indirectly, it's going to be voted on in that regard. And I talked to MinDOT. I was the one who started the petition because a lot of people weren't informed and it was just a very, very few people. So that's what I feel like there needed to be a voice out there for those people, that this is gonna directly impact. And so, because I felt like the last, because there is a batch plant, I believe, right out there already on this property, or not their property, but right next to it. So I feel like that's already been in play. Why do we need another one? That's gonna only increase more industrial use in that area is kinda gonna set the standard. And, but my concern is we're gonna be up, it's gonna be a lot like North Fargo with sewage lagoons and trucking companies and I'm not about progress. I love the fact that Morehead could be a community with churches and schools and parks, just like the Fargo side. We've got Briarwood, we've got the Fargo Country Club. And there's churches and schools and green space. That would be awesome if Morehead does tend to, and this is kinda the last area that Morehead can really grow towards because everything else has been pretty developed out in that area. So I feel like if I can speak up for the people that didn't hear about it and we're just trying to be a voice of, of those area, of, of the farmers and of the legacy that's been before that. It's been a hundred years our family has been out there. And the old farmstead is still there and so. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Question for the applicant again, I, um, if, if this plat, or if this, if this proposal was not approved, um, or, or if they, uh, I should say if, if the planning commission, rejected these, this concrete plant,
Mm-hmm.
Um, would the, would the applicant still have gone through this, this portion? This splitting that into a ten acre piece?
You know, uh, that, that's a difficult question to, to answer. The two are definitely tied. You know, the, the, the proposed use precipitated the creation of this lot, but, um, you know, I, I think the intention is to plot it into a ten acre parcel at this point in time, so. Um, you know, there were, there were a few comments made and, and again, I know we're here to consider the plat, but, but I feel like, uh, you know, something should be, could be addressed a little bit. Um, you know, the MinDOT piece, that the, the applicant is more than willing to follow all requirements and safety. I think MinDOT's pretty conservative with, with their requirements. And so if we're underneath the threshold to require improvements, um, that, you know, that, we're not dictating that. The, the, if MinDOT was gonna require it, it'd be on somebody else's dime, which is the case right now. So, you know, we'd be happy to build out anything that they're requesting. The truth is, you know, and we, we, we made the application some time ago to MinDOT before this went to the township and, and they're just not that concerned with it. That's the truth of it. It's underneath the threshold of their concern. And like I said, they're conservative with that because they get it in on the developer's dime. And so if they had any concern, they'd be requiring it. Um, the, the, the crushing was brought up a little bit, you know, and I, Steve's involved with that and he said they crushed a few times on there, maybe two days total last year. But there's the other concrete plant that is also crushing. And so I think there was a little bit of confusion maybe on what activities are occurring on the, the property to the north that, that Steve is part of or in. Um, you know, uh, traffic was also brought up on the township roads and this plant's gonna be fronting Highway seventy-five. So, and they, they, they're for sure gonna follow any requirements for haul road restrictions and, and, uh, respect the loss of the land. Um, and I think another point that was brought up was regarding the Bannermans and, and Steve's been personally in contact with them, so you know, he, he's, they've spoken on their own behalf. They don't need somebody to speak on their behalf.
I, I think that's fair. We do have the statement in here that the Bannermans were opposed. I mean, so it's, what she commented on was not out of line with what we have from Bannermans.
Sure. Well, I guess different conversations have been had and maybe better communication is needed between the Bannermans, but, uh, um, you know, this gets down to an issue of we need facilities such as this to continue to own and operate in the area in order for Fargo-Morehead to be in business. And a- as she mentioned, there's a concrete ready mixed plant directly in this vicinity. And there's probably not a more perfect spot for this location. You know, the county came up with standards and setbacks and restrictions and beyond that, for the visual impairments that, that were mentioned, that, that's a valid concern. And I think there's conditions and things that we can do today that'll be discussed further tonight in order to improve on that and, and maybe not even meet in the middle, but go beyond that and provide screening and provide, uh, lighting, you know, downlighting and other things to reduce that noise. And they'll hear tonight, but we're in favor of that, you know. They, they want the freedom to use their land in a productive manner, but also be good neighbors. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request. You know, they, they have the right to use their property and, and their enjoyment a- as does this landowner and, and that's what we're looking for, so.
All right, um, so the, the action that this board is being asked to take is basically the plat, dividing the plat. Be- because even prior to this and because everybody who's here is concerned about more of the actions that are gonna be ongoing this evening at the planning commission level, uh, my question, Matt, is for all parties involved. Uh, if we were to approve this plat today and they go in there tonight and the planning commission were to approve the request, do the landlord, do the landowners have the right to appeal that to the county board?
The, if they were to approve it, the, the appeal would go to, um, either the district court or court of appeals.
We just changed that just recently. Normally it used to come to the county board if you appeal.
Yeah. It would go to-
Wait a second. I think we're, he said if the applicant gets the approval, he's not talking about the applicant's appealing, he's talking about the residents.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about tonight, if, if the planning commission were to approve what they have before them, assuming that we've done what the request is this morning and they approve it, we have a lot of people here who are in opposition to this. What is their method to challenge that?
Would have to be challenged in district court or the Minnesota Court of Appeals.
I see.
Yep.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo, did you? Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Do we have any other comments?
If not, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebberinger. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. The public hearing is now closed. The record is, um, what we have in the record is what's been part of the packet as well as the public comments today. All right, uh, what's the board's wishes? Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I serve on the planning commission, but Commissioner Kravonov, uh, attended this meeting, uh, for me, so he was part of the dialogue and I think can add some additional comments on that. Uh, you know, when we look at what future land uses are, I think those, that conversation is very vital and very needed and important and I think the avenue for that will be this, this evening. I, uh, do live in Kurt's Township. I attended the Kurt's Township Board Meeting, I think we had on the twenty-third, and there was a long dialogue about future land use, but also the request before us today. And, um, I appreciate, uh, the fact that we're talking about, um, prime farmland and the values of fi- prime farmland and the importance of, um, retaining that character. I'll also remind the board that, um, not everyone can afford farmland. Uh, so, uh, when you have newer families that maybe want to settle in Clay County, uh, buying a, a quarter section of land isn't always in the financial cards for folks and so by doing a, a parcel split and making a ten acre piece, that does become a avenue for additional folks to maybe attain, uh, purchasing farmland. If, you know, if the, if we don't talk about a batch plant or, uh, concrete pieces, those, those pieces. I live on a, on a, a parcel of farmland that was quartered out that my family could afford and, and so I think that's important to talk about too, as Clay County is the fastest growing county outside of the metro area, so those are important components. Um, I also say that, um, you know, while a ten acre split might not raise a flag for Highway seventy-five access, I would, I would guess if you were to look at that corridor of development with the new, the new parcels that are out there with what Knife River and the batch plant is, um, we're getting to a threshold in which, um, someone who's driven that road since she could drive will be an access issue. Uh, we are approaching accesses on that, that piece. When you look at residents, not only the one on the river there, but that whole kind of um, section of land that's served by Highway seventy-five access, we will have issues. And, um, I, I've worked with MinDOT a lot to know they are conservative and I will say, when they get to hearing how many trucks will be coming in and out of that piece, we'll have some issues. Um, you know, I, I'm really torn as I believe that the township officers will, were also in that dialogue about on what future, um, uses could be. Understanding prime farmland is important. Understanding we're also in this growing area which needs to be served by product and I understand that. Um, but when I look at what's ahead of us today, what is, not today, but tonight's late, different, but right now with this parcel split, um, you know, I, I don't see anything that I can vote against this. I do have concerns about other pieces, but when we talk about a, a parcel split, I have not seen anything right now where I can vote against. not seen anything right now where I can vote against it.
Commissioner Krabunov.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. I guess I disagree. I think that the, in my opinion, when we look at the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, I'm reading this, land use for agriculture, recognize and protect the agricultural character of Clay County, protect prime agricultural soils from commercial, industrial, and residential development. And it's not part of the, I think I heard Matt say it's not part of the comprehensive growth plan right now. Is that correct, or did I misunderstand?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell for the city of Moorhead.
Moorhead? Okay, thank you. But I just think this continuing to build, and especially when we start, and I, from the hearing that we had at the planning commission, I asked, why does it need to be there? And they didn't, the reason he wanted it there is because that's where MnDOT told him he could have one access point, and that's why it's there. But the idea of, you know, just creating more development when I think there are other opportunities with things, Clay County, for him to do the same thing, I am opposed.
Commissioner Bear.
I believe what's sitting in front of us right now is to, for the plat, and what happens tonight happens tonight, and I believe, I appreciate everybody coming, but I think their concerns are for what's tonight's meeting would be about. I believe in front of us is the plat, and I'm in favor of the plat.
Commissioner Ebinger.
I think what we have in front of us, we have to take it face value. What the planning commission does tonight, and subsequent to that, if it requires litigation, that's a different matter, but we don't want to be in a position where we're restricting people from using their, or from using their land in a manageable fashion. And in absence of the other issues that have been brought up, this is a fairly simple transaction and a simple request, so I'm going to be supportive of it.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Outpatrol subdivision final plat based on the planning commission's recommendations.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? I'm going to point out that I agree if this, if this were to be brought before us and that had there not been any discussion of a concrete plant, I think there wouldn't be the hesitancy on the part of this board to go along with this. So, the issue is the, is the concrete plant, and that's an issue for tonight. And it's an issue that the planning commission is going to have to deal with tonight. I'm disappointed that the appeal process, if it were to be approved, that our own Clay County people couldn't come back to this board. That, but again, we're the ones who made that decision to have it go to district court. And again, I, going back to the land issue, I firmly agree that we had somebody talk about the lifelong time on their family farm, and they, you know, they probably want to see that for several more generations. But we also, I've also seen that we have family farmers who decide that they want to move on to something else, and they don't want to be restricted from their value of their property in being able to do what's best for them. And so that goes, my argument goes in opposition of what Commissioner Krabunov was saying, that by hell or high water, we can't do, we can't let anybody do anything but farmland. That's the farmer's choice. It's their, it's their, they invest in it, and it's their right. So, I'm going to, I'm going to support this motion. I hope the planning commission strongly hears the concerns of all the residents tonight. So, any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Want a roll call vote on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krabunov.
No.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Bear.
Aye.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move on. We have, our next public hearing is a request of a platted subdivision for Scott Manthe.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open, and we have a second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. The public hearing is open. All right, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a platted subdivision final plat for, this is a 1-block, 12-lot residential subdivision. It is located west and south of Holly on the east, on the west side of Mariah Lake, and its zoning is ag-general, and the overlay zoning on this property is general floodplain, shoreland, special protection. So, as I mentioned, it's for that 1-block, 12-lot residential subdivision. The plat name is the Oaks on Mariah Lake subdivision. The 67-acre parcel currently used for agriculture. There aren't any structures on this property. The crop equivalency rating on this is varied, excuse me, 24 to 67. Most of it is not prime farmland. There are three major wetland complexes on the property, kind of running from the south up to the north. This larger one is where that general floodplain is located. The developer did work with the SWCD and the Board of Water and Soil Resources. They did a wetland delineation. They had a, what's called a technical evaluation panel meeting, so that's where they all meet and review all the information about wetlands and make a determination of what's a wetland and what's not a wetland, and what's a plant. So, the improvement plans for this subdivision, it's an 11 residential lots, ranging from just over 2 and 1/2 acres to over 8 and 1/2 acres, an average size of just over 4 acres. There'll be 1 15 and 1/2-acre outlot, kind of in the middle here. 1 24-foot-wide road, which would be named Seventh Avenue South. They do have stormwater management and restrictive covenants as well. The sewer would be private. The lots do have space for two drain fields. Those have been marked out too on the preliminary plat. Private wells, nearby well depths did range, range from about 55 to 88 feet, with pump tests ranging from 15 to 40 gallons per minute. Our minimum requirement is five for this. So, here's just kind of a closer look at where the, the road comes in off of 200th here, and then kind of follows along this high spot between the lake and this wetland, then terminates in this cul-de-sac right here. These lots would be all shoreland lots, and then these lots would actually be outside that shoreland area. Township action, so Holly Township did approve the preliminary and final plat. They did adopt a road resolution for Seventh Avenue South, which is a requirement before this board can make any consideration. They also did enter into a road agreement with the developer. We haven't received any public comments or comments from the DNR on this at all. How this relates to our comprehensive and transportation plan, we have a residential land use goal to provide opportunities for quality rural residential development in Clay County. The planning commission found this to be the case to encourage development of agriculture and conservation subdivisions that cluster residential development on small lots and provide for shared open spaces. This is not necessarily a conservation subdivision, but the developer did, working with their engineering firm, kind of designed the layout of this to lessen impacts to environmentally sensitive areas as what, such as wetlands and floodplain zones, and then make sure that it's consistent with all of our shoreland standards as well. We do have a objective too to permit large lot, non-farm residential development if a partial, portion of the property is preserved or converted to a use that retains a rural character. A lot of these lots will have, just because of the wetlands on the property, a lot of open space in undeveloped areas that'll preserve that rural character. And then avoiding or mitigating any residential development on or near environmentally sensitive lands. And as I mentioned before, they had a, worked with Clay SWCD and Bowser to delineate and avoid wetlands. They don't have any structures or roads proposed within floodplain areas, and the development setbacks would meet or exceed those standards. And I just want to go back to the... And it's a little difficult to see, but one thing that was kind of useful that the developer provided was potential spots for a drain field, an outbuilding, and a residence for each of these lots. That was kind of nice to see, meeting all the setbacks there. So, any questions for me at all?
Applicant? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Scott Manthe, and I live in Eglin Township, just east of Holly, and had, we'd moved out there in 2012, and the kids grew up in Holly High School, and now they're getting older and they're looking for a spot to bring their families back, two are married and one's not yet. And so was looking for a place. I actually looked at this property once in 1998 when it was on a foreclosure sale with the prior owner, and wasn't able to buy it at that time. And I saw it come up for sale with Pipers, and then we got to looking at it, and went out with my family and looked over the land, and actually, the first three lots on the south side of the lake will be looked at for their properties, and also the first three on the west side of the property, so they can have back lots if they want to build a shop or something like that. Grew up on a farm, so I like large lots, not small city lots, and want to definitely keep our kids in the area, so looking to sell the lots to the north to help defray some of the costs of the, of the development, and then would do the road ourselves. We have the equipment to do that, and have done, had that experience before, and want to make a really nice place for them to have their homes. They'd all be on the end of the road, be a low-traffic road because of, you know, only eight residents off the new road, and they're looking, they're excited about it, looking forward to it, and hope you'll consider it.
So, in terms of the, of the road, would that become Township Road?
Yes.
Okay, so that part's been?
Handled with the township, yep. That's where the road agreement came in.
But you're, you're going to build the road?
Yep.
And you're going to, you'll obviously do it to?
Yep.
The specifications.
Because they'll have the township engineer.
Okay.
Jade from Apex and Detroit Lakes.
Okay.
I've spoken with him and my engineering firm, Moore Engineering, that designed the road. They, they've also visited with him directly.
And I think our, I think requirement is our county engineer has to sign off on?
Yep, they'll, well, there's no, I talked to him, and there, he doesn't sign off on it.
Okay.
It's, they got to build.
It's part of the review process.
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right. Questions? Any other comments? Well, I, this is a, to me, this is, this matches the story that we've talked about for a long time and the need to be able, Commissioner Mojo talked about a little bit earlier, the ability to expand in certain areas where we have people who grew up living on a farm or living on big acres like you talked about, and they're, and if we don't allow some sort of expansion, some of these rural areas, you know, these kids and grandkids are not going to be able to move back to those rural areas and to the, to the large lots. So, this is, this is exactly why I certainly support this type of development, so. Yeah, anything else? Any other comments? Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Yeah, make a motion to close.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Yes?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. Again, I was at the planning commission, and I believe there was no opposition. Every, it was a unanimous vote for. I'm very excited for this family. I made a comment about it the other day. The three kids even have the lots picked out already, so I thought that was pretty fun.
Was there like seniority who got?
Anyway.
Or did you arm wrestle for it?
I already give it by who gets the most work.
Yeah. Anyway, I too really appreciate what they're doing out here, and I think it's wonderful, and I'll fully support it. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the Oaks on Maria Lake subdivision final plat based on the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Mojo.
Did we, we didn't move out of public?
Oh, yeah, yes, that's right. Well, we didn't.
We didn't, I don't think we have.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't vote. We had a motion and second his discussion came. So, let's just, let's vote on that first. Now, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Now you're okay to?
As read.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Krabunov, second by Commissioner Mojo to approve the final plat. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. We are going to take a five-minute break. In session here, we're going to take our 9:35 item at 10:06. All right, we have an opioid presentation.
No, we have our.
Oh, excuse me.
Quinn up there.
Yeah, we have Quinn, yes.
Who should go faster first?
I was going to give it to Annabelle.
Well, that's right, our 9:30 item we're doing now. Yeah, item number, we're doing item number five.
Five, six?
Maybe we should go back on break and start over.
A break's not going to help me.
Good morning, Quinn.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. I'll go whenever you want me to go, that's fine. So, I am here today to request a motion approving a letter of support for some modernization advocacy with some of our information systems. As you're aware, but for the community to know, Social Services is facing a significant turning point in how we administer our essential safety net programs like medical assistance and SNAP. With Minnesota's statewide human service systems in the midst of long-awaited modernization efforts, we are simultaneously preparing for substantial changes stemming from the recently passed one big beautiful bill, which I know I spoke to this board about a few months ago. These changes include sweeping new administrative mandates that will directly impact our day-to-day work, some of the most significant changes of the new work requirements for certain Medicaid recipients, mandatory six-months eligibility renewals instead of annual, monthly address verifications, and quarterly cross-checks with Social Security Administration's death file. These changes will dramatically increase the workload for our eligibility workers who are already managing complex and growing caseloads. The reality is pretty clear, without modernization, the only way to meet this increased demand and these, these added burdens is to continue adding staff, and that approach is just not sustainable. We're already seeing the strain on our workforce and relying solely on staffing growth to absorb these changes right now, and we know that that's not a long-term viable solution. Compounding this challenge, the federal government is also reducing its share of the administrative funding that counties rely on to support this work by about 25%. In essence, counties like ours are being asked to do more with less by the state and federal government, at a time when the complexity and program rules and the volume of the work is also increasing. Combination of new requirements and reduced funding underscores why system modernization isn't just helpful, but it's essential. So, the systems that I'm referencing are MAXIS, METS, MEC Squared, SSIS. These are fragmented and outdated. They're really not equipped to meet the demands of today's real-world situations and the clients that we serve, let alone tomorrow's. Without streamlined integrated tools that support automation, reduce redundancy, and improve data accuracy, we risk failing both our own staff and the residents who depend on these services. on these services. If we cannot increase efficiency through technology, we'll be forced to make difficult decisions about service levels and local funding commitments. So that's the context in which I'm calling for a strong county-centered approach to this modernization effort. And I've attached a letter of support addressed to the Commissioners of DHS and DCYF emphasizing the need for shared governance, sustained local funding, and an equal investment in counties of all sizes. It also emphasizes the urgency of this work. Modernization must not only happen, but it has to happen quickly, and it has to be done well. Social Services is ready to be a collaborative partner in building a modern human services system that works for residents and staff alike. But without decisive action to modernize the tools we use every day, we will not be able to meet the demands of the new federal requirements without passing the burden entirely onto the shoulders of our workforce. I did attach a draft letter for your review, and at the request of Commissioner Baer, on my copy, I did add Representative Jim Joy to be CC'd into this as well. With that, I would yield for any questions that you may have.
Yes, Commissioner Baer. I know I reached out to you on that one. I'd also like to see Representative Gander CC'd and Senator Johnson. They represent three, four townships on the northern half of Clay County, just to make sure we hit them all.
Yeah, I was going to mention that as well. Representative Gander is in a position of committee power on those, and that would be helpful as well.
Gander and who else, I'm sorry?
Senator Johnson.
Thank you.
Well, this is a, you know, this is a good letter. It's something that's been, it's on a high priority at this county board level as well as at AMC. We had a report given this morning by our auditor, and there was a couple of findings in there that we talked about. You, Quinn, I think you were part of that audit findings. And part of that, I think, can be attributed to this outdated, you know, some of those things that were missed. If we had a better updated system, probably would, you know, would have improved that.
Sure, make it easier. I did listen to that this morning, and I kind of dug into that a little bit just for this board. A few of those things were, so the examples of the errors that were found, there was a missing signature page on one of the cases. Everything else was done 100% correctly. The application was there, but the page with the signature wasn't included in our files. We had two cases that were transferred from other counties where the application didn't come with in the transfer, and we were dinged for that. We had two situations in which the application itself was entered correctly but not uploaded into our electronic filing system, and about four others where we simply, I would say we made a mistake, where there was data entry errors there. So I just wanted to follow up as I did hear that from the audit finding this morning.
Yeah, well, I think this is a good letter. It's timely, and it kind of coincides with...
Quinn, so the 40 million that we got last year, right, was toward technology improvement, right? Correct? Do you know, and I thought that was, I should be wrong, that was put toward SSIS?
Yes, that was only remarked towards SSIS modernization.
Can you tell me a little, just briefly, a little of the differences between these four, you know, and does one work into another?
Sure. There's not as much crossover as we'd like to see. So MAXIS and METS are primarily, and MEC squared are primarily the ones that our eligibility workers in our financial services division use. That's to handle SNAP benefits and MA benefits. METS is the medical system, MAXIS is the SNAP, is the SNAP system. SSIS is a completely separate program and a completely separate system that our social workers use for disability services, adult and behavioral health, child protection, things of that nature. There is no, the programs do not communicate with one another at all, which that would be a very helpful thing to be able to have.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Quinn, thanks for providing this. I think it's the best first step as we continue that march forward towards telling the story of the inefficiencies in a time when we are all trying to find reduced fraud risk, enable our staff to do the best work possible. This is the number-one priority that, from going to all 10 of the Association of Minnesota Counties District, I heard. We understand that we want to limit fraud in any department that we work with, and for our staff to have the tools, this is it. You know, to make sure that that signature page is included while they didn't have to work through 15 minutes of worthless questions to get that piece. It's my understanding that making sure that both of these commissioners on here have this information is important, but also maybe if it would be of support from this entire board, once we know who the committee chairs are for the legislative session, to make sure that this letter is forwarded to them. Both DFL and GOP caucuses need to have this as part of the dialogue, but I fiercely support what we're trying to accomplish here.
All right. Mr. Ebinger.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve a letter of support to the Commissioners of the Department of Human Services and Department of Child, Youth, and Families to support modernization of efforts for social services technology system. Also add to that the appropriate legislators who have been identified during our discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we'll do our 935 item, opioid prevention and harm reduction program update.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the time this morning to share some progress updates on our opioid prevention and harm reduction program, as well as a status update on our Clay County opioid settlement funds. Just some quick definitions for context before we jump in. Opioids, probably most of us are pretty familiar, but just a recap of what those are. A broad class of drugs known for reducing feelings and intensity of pain. These are very potent, very addictive drugs, and we have both prescription and illicit opioids, things like heroin, fentanyl, oxycodone, et cetera. Harm reduction is another term you'll hear me reference quite often. Harm reduction is really, at its core, is about meeting people where they're at. It's an evidence-based approach that really focuses on minimizing the negative consequences of substance use, both for that individual and for the community as well. With harm reduction, like I said, it's really about meeting people where they're at with the understanding that not everyone is ready for treatment, and we can't force them to that stage of readiness, but we can try to keep them safer and save their life, make sure they're alive, and continue that connection with them, trying to help them to that point of readiness. Some examples of harm reduction include things like naloxone distribution and access to naloxone and corresponding education. Fentanyl test strips are another example, where people are able to test their drug supply for presence of lace substances like fentanyl, and syringe service programs like the one in Fargo is another example of harm reduction. Naloxone versus Narcan, you'll hear these terms commonly used interchangeably. Naloxone is the drug itself. It's the medicine that reverses opioid overdose, and Narcan is naloxone, but it is a name brand of the nasal spray version. All of the work under this program has been grant-funded thus far, so just wanted to give a brief background on that funding. We have a few different grants from the Minnesota Department of Health. The first is our Substance Misuse and Suicide Prevention Grant. This grant really focuses on that really upstream prevention, specifically with youth in Clay County, and looking at those different shared risk and protective factors when it comes to both suicide and poor mental health and substance use. So the factors that influence both of those things. This is a four-year grant. We are in year two, and it's $500,000 total. Next, from MDH, is our Drug Overdose Prevention Grant. This is another four-year grant. Again, we're in year two of this $200,000 grant, and with this grant, as it sounds, really focuses more on overdose prevention and harm reduction. We work pretty closely with our Churches United Shelter and their entities, and Clay County HRA under this grant, which I'll talk about later. We've also received two different awards from the FM Area Foundation. The first was last year for a $10,000 award, and then this year again for $5,000 to support our efforts. And lastly, our CHB has a Cannabis and Other Substances Prevention Grant, or CSUP, grant, as it sounds, really focuses on cannabis prevention and other substances like tobacco and opioids. So some of my work is housed under here as well. And that was split, that funding is split between our CHB, so around $55,000 for Clay for year one, around $75,000 for year two. Opioid settlement funds are, come from legal settlements with opioid manufacturers and distributors for their role in perpetuating the opioid crisis. And these funds are really intended to address the harm caused by the opioid crisis by supporting efforts like prevention, treatment, recovery, and harm reduction services within the community. Overall, the goal with these funds is to save lives, limit opioid-related harms and risks, and continue to increase community coordinated response and capacity to address this issue. These funds do come in waves, and both the timing and the amounts of these waves are somewhat unpredictable because each settlement is structured differently. For instance, we have some settlements where we will receive all of the payments over a four- or five-year period, whereas others are more drawn out. So we're about two years into an 18-year timeline, and we will continue to receive payments, roughly another 2.5 million is estimated over the next 16 years. That number and that timeframe is a bit fluid because we are able to opt into additional settlements as they become available. So until they go through all those legal hoops, we don't know those exact amounts. To date, we've received a little over 1.3 million. As you know, that first million did go to our new detox withdrawal management facility, expanding that bed capacity from 16 to 32. So that leaves us with a little over $330,000 to use for what we see fit or what is decided by the commission. And with that money that we have left over, or the money we have right now, is most of that has come just in the last couple of months from various settlements. As we move forward with our programming, we anticipate needing roughly around at least $100,000 annually to really sustain countywide efforts and make sure that we have that coordinated community response. We will have opportunities to partner with different community organizations to get the funds out into the community and to make those dollars work effectively with more of those grassroots efforts as well. You may have heard of other counties or cities opening an RFP process for their settlement funds, so eligible community organizations can apply with projects centered around this to receive that funding, again, putting more money out in the community to expand the work.
Can I just really interject?
Yes.
Quick, thanks for this slide. I am really excited about the work that Clay County Public Health has done with this board to address a lot of different areas with the opioid settlement dollars, and the work that we're doing with the treatment facility is just enormous. And we heard earlier about the need and how it's growing, and as we talk about so many different layers of how we address this crisis, the treatment component is just so heartwarming to me about what we're able to do with this. I appreciate this is on there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? We can pause at this point, talking about settlement funds, if there's any questions about this before we move forward with more program updates.
I've got, okay, go ahead. I've got one question. Across the river there, they were using, spending money on crack pipes and methamphetamine pipes. Are we using any of that money for that?
We are not, no. We do not have a syringe service program on this side of the river.
All right, thank you.
The $100,000 that you're saying needed annually, is that for staffing?
For staffing and for program expenses as well. We estimate this just based on the different grant funding sources that we have right now and how that funding is utilized to support our efforts. Any other questions? Okay, we will move on to some more program updates. So when I started at Clay County a little over two years ago, this was a brand-new position, a brand-new program, so was really able to build it from the ground up. And with that, was able to make sure that all of the different program components really align with evidence-based practices and align with those recommended strategies for using settlement funds, although this was all grant-funded thus far. One big chunk of my work is really education, prevention, and awareness. One training I provide is an overdose response training. This training focuses on background on the opioid crisis, really how we got to this point. We also cover signs and symptoms of an overdose, how to effectively respond using Narcan nasal spray, and we also cover Good Samaritan laws, so what people's rights are when carrying and using naloxone in good faith, as well as responding to an overdose, whether they are the person overdosing or if they are with someone who is overdosing. So we educate on what the law says their rights are. And then we also make sure during each one of those trainings to let people know where they can find other harm reduction resources in the community. Through this training, this is done with a variety of community organizations. It's open to any group that is interested, but I do regular trainings at the shelter monthly and in our jail regularly and with treatment groups around the area as well. So since October of 2023, 871 people have been trained in overdose response. We've also created and distributed many different education materials and awareness materials, trying to address the stigma around substance use and keep people informed as well. Some of those materials include things like Good Samaritan law, naloxone and harm reduction education, where those resources are, risk of lace substances, and connection to treatment and other resources as well. Under our grants, we have had the opportunity to translate some of these materials as well, which has helped us reach even more people and helps with accessibility. One really exciting program we have is called the ONE Program, or Opioid and Naloxone Education Program. This is a collaboration with NDSU's CAP Center under their School of Pharmacy, and NDSU actually created this program. It's an evidence-based program that they have implemented throughout many sites in North Dakota, and we are actually the very first site outside of the state of North Dakota. So bringing this to Minnesota was very exciting. What this is, is a screening tool for pharmacists to use, and so when someone has prescribed opioids, the pharmacist is trained in how to use this screening tool to see if there is risk of opioid misuse, addiction, and overdose. From there, they use the results of that tool to then provide interventions such as education with the patient. They can also contact the patient's provider for follow-up. They can refer to outside resources, but they also provide things like naloxone, medication disposal bags for proper medication removal, and then education materials as well. And that is really where the Public Health Partnership comes in here, is we provide the funding for the program, making sure that all of the pharmacists are onboarded and trained by NDSU, and then we provide the materials like the naloxone, the med disposal bags, and the educational materials. We do have four pharmacies currently under this program in Clay County, and they're listed up here. Most are, three of them are in Morehead, and then one is in Holly. One of the things we're very fortunate of in this position is having really strong community partnerships, and one of those is with Morehead Fire Department, and this has really helped us identify system gaps and ways we can improve our response to the opioid crisis. One of those gaps that was identified when I started in this role was our follow-up and connection with individuals after an overdose. So what we've done with this new system change is partnered with Morehead Fire Department and a treatment provider, Beth's Place. And how this works is the fire department at the scene of the overdose will connect with the individual and say, in so many words, "We have someone who can follow up with you. We have people who want to help you." And really, they're taking that contact information of that person for that follow-up and then putting that referral into the overdose response team, which is led by Beth's Place. Beth's Place then makes contact with that individual within 12 to 24 hours is the goal, and that window was decided because it's a very critical time after that overdose. Oftentimes, what we've seen is someone's readiness after an overdose for maybe seeking help or wanting to go to treatment, things like that, is a lot higher. And so reaching them during that critical window of time, instead of just having no follow-up at all, is very important. We continue to grow this partnership, including law enforcement as well. We are working on a new software platform right now that law enforcement, public health, fire, and treatment would have access to, to really... fire, and treatment would have access to, to really have a more coordinated effort and to see, be able to track a little bit more who's followed up with who. As somewhat of a sister program to this overdose response team, we have a Narcan Leave-Behind Program. And again, this is with our partnership with Morehead Fire Department. They leave Narcan behind at the scene of an overdose, either with the person who overdosed, or with family or friends or those around. The intent behind this is to keep saving lives and to, again, keep offering that connection to resources. Someone is at risk of overdosing a second time after their Narcan wears off. It's only active in the body for about thirty to ninety minutes, so that makes these leave-behind programs quite important as well. We do a ton of naloxone distribution under this program. That was one of the very first priorities when starting in this role, was becoming a naloxone access point and making sure that the residents of Clay County had access to free naloxone. It is an expensive product. It's about forty-five dollars a box, so making sure that people have barrier-free access to it is important. We have many different distribution hubs. We, of course, are able to give it out to people at Public Health by individual request. We have spots at our shelters, our detox offers to people when they are leaving jail as well. Our HRA buildings have some naloxone kiosks where people are able to grab supplies in connection to resources, and our food pantries as well. I've also partnered with our campuses to make sure students have access to naloxone and education, and we've stocked all of our county AEDs with Narcan as well. And of course, anyone who participates in overdose response training is offered Narcan too. Through this, we started our distribution in February of 2024, and we have distributed three-hundred-and-four, three-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-three doses thus far. In terms of harm reduction supplies that we offer outside of Narcan, under our overdose prevention grant, we do work closely with Churches United and with Clay County HRA. The harm reduction that we supply, or harm reduction supplies we have in addition to that Narcan are things like the fentanyl and xylazine test strips, which is an evidence-based strategy, and wound care kits, and safer sex supplies as well. So again, the intention behind these things is to reduce disease transmission, keep people safer, and keep them informed. The through line in all of this work really has been collaboration and capacity building for the community's response. I do co-coordinate two different coalitions. One is the Red River Recovery Initiative. This is a cross-border collaboration led by me and then my counterpart, Robin Licky-Sell from Fargo-Cass Public Health. And we have a variety of sectors on this coalition, representing everyone from healthcare to treatment, people with lived experience. And really, our focus is overdose response and overdose prevention with this group. I also co-coordinate a rethink mental health and substance misuse coalition. Again, going back to some of our grant funding, this coalition focuses on that really upstream prevention, more with youth, looking at those different risk and protective factors that influence suicide and substance misuse. We do collaborate with the Harm Reduction Center in Fargo and their syringe service program. While we are not a syringe service program, we know that they provide services to Minnesota residents. And with our partnership, where we can help address needs is really just by providing the naloxone for the Minnesota residents that they see. With this partnership too, it also helps us really stay informed of what's happening in the community when it comes to substance use, based on the clients that they are seeing and hearing from. Grant funding, we are constantly seeking new funding opportunities, keeping an eye out for grant opportunities that would be good for community organizations that we work with. We have collaborated on applications before or shared with organizations, encouraging them to apply as well. Data evaluation innovation, again, is really part of everything that we do, making sure that it's evidence-based, driving all of our decisions based on data. And one of those projects that we're working on is a pilot project called MNOD Alerts, or Minnesota Overdose Alerts, and this is under the Minnesota Department of Health. And what this looks like is, the Minnesota Department of Health has access to real-time data around substance use and overdose, much more expanded data than what we would have at Public Health. And so they monitor that for spikes, clusters, or new emerging drug threats. And then they are able to assign a tier level of alert and notify Public Health, who then really mobilizes our response team, which is that Red River Recovery Initiative, those different sectors. From there, we can have a more coordinated response. They provide recommendations for each tier for how a community should respond to a potential spike, or a cluster, or a new drug. Again, this is a cross-border collaboration with that group, so this impacts the entire Fargo-Morehead area, not just Morehead and Clay County. We've also gained access to OD MAP over the last year. This is an overdose tracking system that traditionally law enforcement only had access to. They were inputting when they would respond to an overdose call, or when they have an overdose report, they would input that. So that was really our only tracking tool for overdoses. And now we have Public Health access to that as well, and EMS has started uploading data. So it's really expanded what we know about substance use and overdose in our community. We get listening session and community feedback quite often, college students, community partners, overdose response training participants, those with lived experience in the jail or at the shelter, in treatment as well, and our different coalition members. And this really helps us to identify where we have those gaps and guide our planning for the future. Lastly, just some upcoming priorities in this program. I am working on getting a few Sharps disposal kiosks put in place across Clay County. This is something that we don't have on the Morehead side. Many people have shared that they have to go to Fargo to dispose of Sharps. And this is not just illicit Sharps. This can be Sharps for any medical conditions as well. So this is one place we want to invest in a little bit more with our grant funding, making sure that people have safe, accessible spot to dispose of Sharps. We also are working on opioid prevention and awareness media campaign under our CSUP grant, that Cannabis and Other Substances Grant. And again, just to make people more aware, connect them with the services and resources that we provide.
Annabelle, can I, Commissioner Moshe has.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for highlighting the Sharps disposal kiosks. You know, Commissioner Campbell and I serve on solid waste, and we talk a lot about medical waste and, but making sure that our solid waste department employees are safe. I think a coordination with Cory and how we, you know, if there's an ability to have something at the resource recovery for more of that, that piece. I have animals. I've got, you know, I need to vaccinate animals too, so it's something that affects me as well, making sure that we dispose of those in a better way. So I appreciate you bringing it up.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, that is something that we have grant funding approval for, and we have some grant funding to support a medical waste company contract as well to help with some of that. And lastly, we will continue to search for grant funds to sustain this work and plan for our settlement fund dollars as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Ebinger.
Just a comment. Two years ago, when we realized we had some, a funding source and we needed to do something about the opioid crisis, we hired you, and you have done a remarkable job. You've become part of this community and reached out to a lot of different entities that needed, needed their efforts coordinated. And I just, this is a great example of people who have, have the skill and the ability to bring something on board and make it work. So I'm going to thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Thank you for the update.
Great. Thank you.
Well done.
All right. Our next A B's, we're just about back on schedule here. Next, we have a request approval to consider the Early Retirement Incentive Program. Darren, are you going to come on for this?
Anna, come up on this too. She may have some more information that I may have to rely on her for. But thank you for this. Several weeks ago, the PIC was tasked to come up with a possible early retirement incentive program for Clay County, seeing as the budget and the levy and everything, and we're looking at any possibility to possibly save some money next year. And so the, I ran some numbers based on who we have right now, and that's this sheet that you'll see right here. And so I'll walk you through right off the bat on what this sheet is telling you, and then I've got some stats here as well that we can discuss. So the sheet will show you the, the age, the years of service, the pay scale, and the sick leave hours that that person has available to them as of, this was run on November, November fourteenth, I believe. Then, taking the years of service and the percentage of payout, so for instance, the first person would have forty-five percent of their payout for sick leave, which means they would have four-hundred-and-forty hours that we would pay them. If they were to leave employment right now, they would get their sick leave severance. Then I took their wage and their payout amount, which would be fourteen, I'm just using the first row as an example here and talking through it. The payout would be fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-two dollars. The benefit that we would incentivize for this program would be one year of benefits and an additional ninety-six-hundred dollars. So the total payment, total payment payout is in yellow there of twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred-sixty-two.
Darren, can I just interrupt just for a minute for a little bit of background on that part?
Yes.
So when the PIC committee discussed on how that ninety-six-hundred dollars was arrived at was, we originally had one number out there, and then we started looking at the potential of the ability to pay, or to at least have, have enough incentive to pay the premium for at least one of our county insurance policies.
Correct.
Because I think the number that we started off was, was less than the ninety-six-hundred when we were talking about it within our, within our PIC committee. But then the suggestion was, was, and I think the ninety-six-hundred does cover one of them. Is that, am I correct, Anna?
Yes, you are. It covers the twenty-six-hundred-dollar health deductible.
Thank you. It covers the twenty-six-hundred-dollar health deductible, that premium, excuse me, not the deductible, the premium, the single dental, and then continuing the basic life for eighteen months.
Okay. All right. I just, I just, for the board, I wanted them to have that.
And, and just for a little bit of history, we did have an early retirement program back in 2010. It was right before I got here, so I wasn't really a part of it. But, so this isn't something new that we've done. We've done this before several years ago. So then, I ran the 2026 yearly county contribution of what the, these individuals have right now. If you see the seventeen-thousand-and-twenty-eight, that would be a single grandfathered plan. If you see the twenty-thousand-five-thirty-two, that would mean that that person has a family plan. As you know, going forward as of 2020, we have a non, a non-grandfathered plan, which anybody that would be hired at this point would go into that non-grandfathered plan. So for instance, the first person has a single grandfathered plan. The new person replacing that person would have a non-grandfathered plan, and that would be a single county contribution, which would mean a savings of five-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars per year. Now, that's if they take a single plan. The family plans are the same, so if you go down to the twenty-thousand-five-thirty-two, and then you go across, you'll see zero, because grandfathered and non-grandfathered, if they take a family plan, they get the same amount. If a person currently has a family plan, and then they, we hire another person to come in, and they take a single plan, there would be even greater savings there. But if somebody goes from a single to a, single grandfathered to a single non-grandfathered, the savings would be five-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars per year. The other column there is what I did is I took somebody's wage at step twelve, and how much we pay them every year, and then compared that to what we would pay somebody on the same grade at step one. So for instance, that first person at grade twelve, there's a twenty-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-two-dollar difference. So the blue column that says total, that's taking the county contribution savings plus the difference between the step one and a step twelve for that year, would be twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars savings.
Does that also add in the colas?
This is just for next year.
Yeah.
So this would be, yes, I believe I added the colas.
Colas would be happen.
Yeah.
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 This is just comparing apples to apples on the.
Right.
On the grid.
Correct. So for that individual on row number one, the to, the total savings to the county would only be a thousand-four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars.
For the first year.
For the first year. Now, Commissioner Campbell's pointed out that that's for the first year. Going forward, there would be obviously savings going forward because that person is not going to be paid at step twelve. They're going to be paid at step two, and three, and four, and up until they get to step twelve.
The 2027 savings for that same individual, or that same, just that line item that we're talking about, that, that fourteen-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, the second year, that'd go to twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty.
Yep. Because you're not paying out the, the payout that.
Well, I, I take that back. It's, but then we would also assume that they would have got, gained two steps.
Correct.
So, so you have to take that into consideration. I did some math there that I figured, on an average, two steps at five-thousand dollars, I did, but I think that might be a little bit high. But.
Yeah.
But still, you're talking, you're still talking twenty, you know, in excess of twenty grand.
Yep. Yes. Once you look at, you know, steps three, four, five, that's, that's higher math. I didn't get that in high school, so. I did run some numbers that, I looked at how many people have been termed so far, just this year. We've, we've termed, and when I say termed, we're not like dismissing them. They're leaving employment. That's, that's just a term that we use. Hundred-and-twenty-nine people have left employment since the beginning of the year. Sixty-two of those were variable hour, seasonal, or temporary. And out of those hundred-and-twenty-nine people that have left, only four of them have been on step twelve. If you took that down to step ten, there was only nine of the hundred-and-twenty-nine that have left employment that have been on step ten or above. So we're not talking a ton of people here.
So one question. So out of the four that left at step twelve, how many of those retired?
Um, can you remember?
I can, I can, I can get that information for you, but we don't have that.
All right. You don't, yep.
Yeah. And the other thing is, so, so part of this program would be, if it's implemented, would a, a person would have to notify Human Resources that they want to take advantage of this program, and they would have to be basically off the rolls. And what we used is June thirtieth of next year. The board can make that change or different. We could also, the board can institute when they want to start this program, if that is what they want to do. The other thing that I want to point out on this early retirement calculations is that you see on the sick leave, you'll see people that have a red block. And those people currently would not be entitled to a sick leave severance because they don't have a minimum of three-hundred hours of sick leave. So if you go over to the column where it says payout dollars, you'll see zeros there because we wouldn't pay them out. The, the, the only thing that they would get would be the ninety-six-hundred dollars. If they don't have, if they don't meet the current sick leave severance policy, they wouldn't get the sick leave severance payment.
Darren, can I, I'd like to jump, talk a little bit about each of these, as you talked about them. And so you talked about that June thirtieth date. Another, another good reason for that is, you know, we also talked about, could there be some concern on the part of somebody in management where they might have two or three people wanting to do this at one time? This, this would allow a little bit of staggering to go on, you know, so if somebody, somebody came in there on January first, because part of the criteria here also, it goes through HR, but then it also has to have supervisor.
Correct. It, it has to be a benefit to Clay County, a savings to Clay County, and has to be approved by the department head.
And one of the And one of the things that, you know, if we had, if we had two or three people that might want to do it at the exact same time, that could, that could have an, a hiring impact. So the, so the ability would, from a supervisor's standpoint, would be, well, you know, the first one that gets this can probably do it first, and then, but then the next person might have to wait, but you'd still get, get within that window of June thirtieth.
And, and maybe as, as the, the first person leaves, we advertise like we normally would.
That's right.
Once we get somebody on board, then maybe the second person could take advantage of the program.
Trying to avoid everything happening at once.
And I think the, the June thirtieth, or whatever date is deemed by the board, is, is there's, the intent is not to let us know on June twenty-fifth that you intend to retire in six months.
No.
The, the June thirtieth date means that they have to be gone. So they could, they could notify us tomorrow, but they have to be gone by June thirtieth.
And I think that's what, that's what we talked about in pick, is that they would, they had, in order to qualify for this, they would have to be off the payroll by June thirtieth.
Correct. Correct. With that being said, did you have anything to add?
I have nothing.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I have one question. We implemented this in twenty-two, do we know how many people took advantage of it in 2010?
It was about five employees.
Five?
Yeah. Not, not a lot.
We probably got an additional two hundred employees over and above what it was in two thousand. So if, so I, so when we, when we talk about this, and again, it, you know, first off, I want to talk about these people that have twenty-some-plus years, they're, you know, they have some institutional knowledge that's, that's important to us. I think this thing is probably more designed for maybe the people who might be planning on retiring, and maybe between now and the next three years. This might be an incentive for them to, to do it a little bit early. The institutional knowledge that they have, it certainly is very important, and it serves a purpose, but ultimately, they, those people with that institutional knowledge leave. And, and they, somebody new does have to come in. But I, so I, I just wanted to, I did a little bit of work on this. In terms of the, if you guys have the columns open up there, the blue column that actually, it's the green column, the net savings for the county. I, I happened to total those numbers up, and if all of these people ever qualified to do it, there would have been a saving, there'd be a savings of seven hundred and three thousand. Obviously, that's not going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think we want that.
I hope not. That would be a lot of hiring.
But, so, but if you, and the, and the average, and I have, according to this, I have fifty-eight people. Because there, because for some reason, there was a line missing, or a row number missing.
Yeah, there's two in there that are duplicated, I tried to get them out of there.
Yeah.
But, I mean, this, this sheet that you have just has the sixty people, but, yeah, between.
Anyway, I, so I took an, I took, so, I, I just took an average per person savings per year. You know, because each one, obviously each one is different, but if you, if you just assumed an average, that's twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars of the first year savings. And, you know, so if we had, if we had ten people retire, that could be a hundred and twenty-one thousand in that first year. Then I, then I expanded your numbers there to this, to 2027, which really is of concern for us. We've all been told to expect much worse things coming out of the state in 2027. And so where this, where this really seems to really then have an impact, instead of that total for the fifty-eight being seven hundred and three thousand savings in 2026, for the first year, the second year would be one point eight million dollars. And then you, but then you also have to take away from that, the fact that those people would move up two steps. And so I put in, I put an average of five thousand dollars a year for that, and that's two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in step increases. So you'd still have a one point five million, and the average of those fifty-eight then becomes twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars per person that would retire on an average. So if we had ten people in twenty, twenty-six, for 2027, that savings would be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's, you know, that's a, that right there is what, probably a little over a half percent of a levy. You know, so I, when we're, when we're talking about things to do for savings, those are, I mean, those are, those are significant dollars.
Just one more thing to point out on the back there, you'll see on the second column in age, you see, I highlighted some orange. So they may not necessarily be retiring.
Yeah.
As we, in, in the general sense, they could be just leaving and going and getting another job, so just wanted to point that out as well. Anybody else have questions of?
I, I don't have a question, but I think this, this is a great idea. I think this, if, if this works, I think this, yeah, it can save us some money long run, and, and then it helps people, you know, if they're, if they're already looking at retirement, helps them, you know, maybe make that decision.
Well, you, you know, another, you know, there's, I, I happen to know some people have been talking about retiring, but then I also know some people who have, having second thoughts about retiring because of right now what's going on with the current insurance that, that's out there, with, you know, with the Affordable Care Act. You're talking about some people, let's face it, when you retire, and all of, a lot of us are well aware of that with our other jobs, when you, one of the biggest concerns you have is your health insurance. And you're making sure that that's going to be affordable to you. And, you know, if they're, right now, right now, there's, all these subsidies are gone that were part of the health and care, and so that makes some people having second thoughts on whether they should or not. That ninety-six hundred dollars might be able to help them in that, in that regard, so. And, yes, Commissioner Krabna?
Well, for guidance, kind of the pick discussion, I mean, are you pushing for this, or is there pros and cons we should be aware of? I mean, I'm hearing pluses right now. And, and kind of want to know where did it come from? The idea and the term?
I think that the idea came from when we did it last time in 2010. We didn't, it was before I got here, but I know that there was a couple of years where you had zero percent colas, I think in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. And they were looking for ways to save money, just like we are today. So I think the idea was, we've never, as far as I know, we've never floated this idea prior to this year, since 2011, when I got here. So I think with the, the budget concerns of next year and 2027, I think we're open to anything that might save some money. I think some of the cons of this is that you're losing a lot of talent, senior talent, and that all depends on how many people take it, which is an unknown right now. You know, if we have thirty people take it, that might be a pretty big hit to the, to the county of losing that much in experience, walking out the door, and then hiring back. I think the other thing you got to realize is that we don't hire everybody at step one, so there's going to be some, you know, people that we hire at step two or step three, savings are still going to be there, but it might not be quite as, as much. So those are the couple of things I could come up with.
Thank you.
Pros and cons.
Part of the, part of, you know, in our first pick committee, when we were also, we were also talking about where we're at right now, and we talked about, there was actually some discussion about hiring freezes. And so one of the, one of our steps, first steps on that was, rather than do a hiring freeze, all of these, when somebody does leave, needs to go to pick, they don't come directly to this board. Part of that, part of that is this process that we're dealing with, how can we save money during this critical time? I mean, there's, there's cer, there's certain times when, you know, if we're sitting there with a two or three percent levy, that's, that's one thing, but that's not the case right now, and I'm, I'm really concerned, 2026 is going to be tough, and 2027 is going to be worse, and when I, when I see the numbers here, that, you know, if we have ten people, and again, that, this is voluntary on their part, we're not forcing anybody out.
Correct.
You know?
Correct.
My, my, my assumption on this thing, on, on this incentive plan, people who were probably intending on doing it in the next one to three years will take a serious look at it.
Mr. Ebbinghaus.
Yeah, this, we, we brought it back and discussed this twice, and, and were provided with updates on, on the data that you've got in front of you now. I think we sent it forward, because we wanted to see how the, the full commission feels about it, but I think this has, has been assessed and talked through at the pick level to where we can bring it up here, and I think this is as good as this particular plan can be. And again, as, as, as the chair pointed out, we're not pressuring anybody to leave, but this gives some people a little bit of a break in worrying about where their insurance is going to come from, if they do leave, and they, they are either coming up to where they're, they're Medicare eligible, or they are just needing a, a year of breathing space to figure out how they're going to address their insurance needs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'll just say it, I, I have really concerns about this. I, I know it's about levy, and, and maybe it's my way of thinking, but I just feel, again, I said this a few weeks ago, you know, we're trying to find a spot to hit a number, it almost feels like, without allowing a natural management to figure out our ways through these challenges. And, and I'm really concerned about that experience. My involvement and other boards has been, you lose someone with all that knowledge, how do you replace that? And how many people or a person and a half does it take to get back to that spot? I'm really concerned about, you know, the people that understand, now I'm speaking to social services, that understand the technology and its inefficiencies that we talked about earlier today. And, and I, I'm guessing they're probably the most efficient people that can work that technology until the new stuff comes. I'm concerned about paying family medical leave. Now we're taking people away, and if someone takes that program, we got to be able to cover that spot. So to start shorting ourselves without managing it, I think there are some serious risks. I don't know, I, I just, I guess I'm more organic than that. I, I just feel that our management should be able to guide us through these times, and we, we need the best. And I think a lot of the people that are most experienced are the best, they are committed, there's a low turnover, and we just have a more solid workforce. And last, I'll just say, you know, we, we tout proudly, as we should, you know, Clay County is the fastest-growing county outside of the metro. And if that's what we are, how short staff, how, how long staff are we really in keeping up? As I see it, with more and more mental health needs, more and more people living at the poverty level, I, I would be concerned about, about our support systems, so.
All right. Any other comments?
No other comments. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the creation of the early retirement incentive program for Clay County employees.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to say, it's voluntary. Nobody's forcing anybody to retire.
Correct.
It is voluntary. And I also believe, we do listen to our staff, but when hard decisions have to be made, it's the five of us that are elected officials that have to make those decisions.
And can I get some clarification? Would this go into effect right away, or would you start it on January, or?
We'll go December first.
December first.
Is that okay with your second?
Yeah, that's good. And I want to point something out, this did originate with staff. I think there's been a lot of brainstorming on where we could try and identify efficiencies and try and keep costs down, and I think, I'm going to assume, correct me if I'm wrong, that this came out of those discussions, as an option that they wanted to go forward and present to us to see if it could help us keep the levy down. So, you know, it originated, didn't originate from, from commissioners here, it originated with, with our staff.
Can I get a clarification? So, so yours, that, that would include the June thirtieth date as well?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, the same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Who did I start with last?
Started with me last.
All right. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thursday, the sixth, I attended an emergency communication board's legislative committee meeting remotely. A lot of discussions about strategic planning, and among which was redraft of the nine-eleven statutes. We've been trying this since 2012. They've, efforts in this have failed, because the telecommunications industry does not want to move forward into the world we're in today, where most of the calls are coming in from cell phones. They still want to be able to get, get, get their funding augmented by the state, as if eighty percent of the calls were on landlines, maintain a system designed for landlines. We adjourned discussions on that two years ago, with the idea that we're going to get a moderator to try and bring this, straighten this out. That has, for one reason or another not explained, has not occurred. But right now, we're going to request a legislative board to work on this, a work group, sorry, not, not a board, but legislative, legislative commission work group, to try and form a new statute and get it up to date. And that is going to, I don't know how many more years it'll be, but it's an ongoing work. Friday, November seventh, met with Blue Sky remotely, Blue Sky, I'm sorry, Dancing Skies Agent, Agency on Aging, to discuss an upcoming exchange panel that we were putting up for age-friendly regional meetings. Wednesday, November twelfth, attended the pick meeting on the incentives that we had today. On Thursday, thirteenth, I went to Park Rapids, and attended the agenda for, or attended the, the committee the committee meeting for the, on behalf of Dancing Skies, for the Northwest Minnesota Age Friendly Exchange. This consisted of a panel and several other activities. We are the last of six exchanges that have been held in the state, and it's to develop a blueprint for age-friendly, the age-friendly community initiatives. It was well put together. The panel was good, we answered a number of questions concerning where the priorities need to be in addressing needs of not just city and urban aging populations, but particularly the focus in this district was on rural needs. Monday, the 11th, I attended the Clay County Township Officers Meeting, which I, myself and Commissioner Bear were there, staff was there and did some great presentations. As always, it's good to talk to our township officers, hear the needs. I think we can be particularly appreciative of our county engineer and the sheriff bringing some really good information to that group. And I know Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner, Sheriff Campbell were in the Twin Cities doing, huh?
I wasn't in Twin Cities, but I had a, had a.
Oh, okay. Just one, particularly with Commissioner Mojo, I know she loves to get out to township meetings, they missed you, but you were, you were doing work for us on that, so I appreciate it. And that completes my report.
All right. Commissioner Krabnikoff?
On the 5th, on the Wednesday, we had our, our briefly non-secure facility, PRTF strategy meeting with our lobbyists. Maintain of that meeting was preparation for the Senate Bonding Tour, which was to come in the next week. Also, we were working with the great help of Steve and Laurie, our final numbers for the 28, roughly the $28 million asked to our, on our, to OMB to get that in the bonding. And then also, starting to add figures, when we asked for the 28, what's our investment today in this project? And Steve did a great job in coming up with about 15 million that we've got in, in the space of what it took to build the current juvenile facility, its operations, updates, additions, and so we're able to show legislature that we do have an investment in this project. On Monday, the 9th, Commissioner Mojo and I were at the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting. There was a landowner in, down in Holy Cross Township, wanting to put some additional aging into an existing drainage system, district, and that was approved. And then along with that, that landowner got a drain tile permit for that use, to put in that drain system. Also, another discussion was down in our Parton Ditch 11 in Southern Elmwood, I believe it is, township, there is an area in there where there's been excessive erosion in, on the river, on the creek going through that area, and they're in a, later reshaping of that area. The discussion on that, it sounds like they'll reach out landlords and then we can, we'll find out more in the future. Also, other various small ditch repairs. Then I'm back to Wednesday, on November 12th, again, one more meeting with our lobbyists, and that was the final prep for the Senate Bonding Tour that we had. I'll let Commissioner Mojo speak much deeper about that. I think we made great inroads, I thought it was well received, and we'll also start making inroads now with our lobbyists toward the governor and more to DHS for additional funding. Also, I had a, kind of the next emergency meeting is what we're calling it, as far as the Food Commission. Again, once again, lost, we've lost a lot of our funding, and he's trying to figure out where we can go with re-leadership to get these, integrate these things in other food systems and other strategies working with food supply. And so, some outside members with the Food Bank having to do with our, has public health, and then also other people involved from the Hunger Coalition, and an issue. So they're more stakeholders. So there's going to be one more meeting, that's coming up on the 24th, and that one is bringing in potential investors into the program to keep it going, to find the ways for financing. So more to come on that one. Last thing I will say, we didn't get a report on SNAP today, but from what I see and what I heard, the amount of food and the amount of donations that were brought into the community over the last couple of weeks, amazing, just absolutely amazing. Food Bank had over two and a half times the supplies of food that they've had in distribution. My wife is very active with a place for hope, and, and those freezers are full, and there's people coming twice as much, just trying to, you know, make sure they have their supplies and their needs. And I know legislative shutdowns coming, are done, these benefits are going to start up again, but there's going to be a trickle effect going for a while for need. So anyway, thank you to the community and, and the people who are in charge of these places and factories. And then, let's see, then we had the Senate Bonding Tour, I already mentioned that. And last part of that, just a real thank you to, again, our juvenile staff for them helping us out. I mean, again, they're just, that day was just awesome. And, and the reception, I believe, that came back, feedback, I think, from the senators that were there was good, and I mean, kind of gave us ideas, areas to pursue. And so with that, I'll leave the rest on the Commissioner Mojo on that. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, November 4th, I attended the Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We talked about project wrap-ups, the County Road 2 piece, and future planning discussion for the Transportation School District meeting that happened the next day. We also had the county-owned property meeting that day. We discussed county-owned parcels, what's allowed, what's not allowed, how we communicate to the public during deer season, and direction moving forward there. The next day, I attended MetroCog HR coordinating meeting for some office reviews that were happening the following day. I attended the Highway Department Transportation Dialogue with the Sheriff's Office and our school districts. I just think that is such a critical meeting that happens every year in how we triage weather-related events, or announcements, or response, and I appreciate the Highway Department and all of those school districts for attending that, and obviously Sheriff Empting. I attended the Clay County Legislative Strategy Meeting with our lobbyists that day, and the next day had annual performance reviews at MetroCog. Friday, I attended the Non-Secure Detention, PRTF Legislative Strategy Meeting, and then a Flood Mitigation Strategy Meeting with the Chamber, Diversion Authority Staff, City of Morehead Staff, Buffalo Red and Clay County. On November 11th, I was able to attend the Barnesville Veterans Day Program. I appreciate all of the schools in Clay County that do that. Was that the day we also had, or I, on the 10th, I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting with Commissioner Krabnikoff, further dialogue on, with them on what they allow on, on their properties, wanted to make sure that it's aligned with Clay County properties as well. There was a dialogue on removal of logs that have built up in rivers. I think that Commissioner Krabnikoff just worked with them on that. And then on, sorry, November 12th, I attended the Cast Clay Food Partners Meeting only as a discussion for historical context on where we've been, as that was the first committee that I was assigned to as part of this board. Also had the Clay County Legislative Strategy Meeting that was final prep for the Bonding Tour. On November 13th, happy to host the Senate Bonding Tour, so important for them to stop in Clay County. We did have a discussion on the Red River diversion flood mitigation ask, that was a presentation at the Yum Combs, and then also able to host them at our West Central Regional Juvenile Facility. Our staff is amazing. They just did such a great job in making sure that that presentation was up to snuff and explaining to them all of the components that our staff do to the, work with the kiddos there. One question that came up from a senator was, why do jurisdictions choose this facility? Why is this working? Why, you know, why do they look at a, a list of available PRTFs and non-secure components throughout the entire United States and pick us? And it's because of the program that has been implemented, the conversations that happened with the Morehead Public Schools to make sure that the schooling component in there and the, the therapy component is there. So a huge gratitude to them for that. The next day was the Legislative Strategy Groups, and then yesterday, I apologize for missing the Township Meeting, Township Officers Meeting. I did have the invitation to meet with the Governor Walz's staff at the Capitol. We also met with the Office of Management and Budget and DNR on the remaining components of the Minnesota flood mitigation needs. Really fortunate for the opportunity to attend that in public, or in, in person. It was public, but also in person. About 15, 17 people there around that table, making sure we're revisiting what the agreement was with the task force and what those needs are for our residents moving forward. And I think that concludes my reports, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November 4th, I was also at the County Owned Lands Committee. We, Mrs. Mojo did a very good job going over that. We also, we also had a pictometry overview. We spent some money, if you don't remember, back in, I want to say it was early spring, late, late winter, on designating some money for that system, for taking pictures of the county, for our staff to use. It's very, the, yeah, the overview was very nice, they did a very good job, I think that will help staff tremendously. Then also, on November 5th, I was at the Wild Rice Watershed District Meeting, where they passed three permits and tabled three and denied one. It was a very informational meeting, it was very quick, there wasn't too many permits on the agenda. After that meeting, I went to the Highway School District Meeting, and it's the first time I've sat through that, and I thought it was a very good meeting, very informational for the school districts and the Highway Department and everybody getting to know what's going to, what we expect during the winter with snowplows and how they run. Then on November 11th, I went to the Glendon Township Meeting. They had some questions about the federal trust land that might be going in on the west side of their county. I informed them, they invited me there, so I gave them an update on the tribal trust land over there. Then November 12th, I was up in Halsted for the Senate Bonding Tour for the West Central Regional Water District, where we gave an update there, and our ask in that group is a $10 million to help us run a pipeline from Halsted down to Felton. That was very well received as well. I want to give credit to the staff for putting that together and the Senate Bonding Tour for making a stop there. Then on November 13th, where are my notes at? I was at the Clay County SWCD Board Meeting, where we had an audit report, and it all looks good, just like ours was. We also discussed, they also wanted to discuss the county, county budget proposal update for what we proposed to them, so I gave them an update on that, on where their ask is. We, we decided as a board, as of right now, not to, just to hold their ask at the same ask they had last year. We had discussion on that. That's pretty much what happened there. Oh, they, they also made a decision on their paid family medical leave update. They decided to go with an outside agency with a .59% there, and the SWCD is going to pay that entire portion. Most SWCDs in the state are paying it because they're getting it at that lower rate, so they are paying that for their employees. And I left that meeting to go to the Senate Bonding Tour in Morehead here with a PRTF and a non-secure unit, and that's my first time sitting through that whole thing, and I thought, staff, and you guys did a very wonderful job there. I was very impressed by staff and you two both, and Steve as well, that how you presented that. I think we've, we've got a very good chance there, so. And after that, on November 17th, I was also at CATCO meeting up in Morkin Town Hall, their new town hall, very appreciative for them opening that up to all of us. There was 16, 36 members there from 18 different townships, so it was very well received, and I want to give credit for staff for showing up there and getting Dave out of the City of Morehead and seeing God's country, so.
With that, that is all I have to say.
Okay. All right.
Wait, you stopped in my district?
No. North of Highway 10, Jenny.
All right.
You reference the good country, you know.
On November 4th, I also had the Highway Tracking Committee Meeting, which Commissioner Mojo reported on, I don't have any additional things to add to that. On Thursday, the November 6th, we had the Intergovernmental Committee, and we spent enough, a lot of time talking about the school bond issues that had, they're both Morehead and, and Dilworth, one was successful and one not so much. And so we talked about that, and there was a lot of discussion about planning for the intergovernmental retreat. I think we've got some ideas in mind there for that. More to come on that. November 7th, we had the flood mitigation check-in with the Chamber, and Commissioner Mojo reported on that one as well. And on Wednesday, the 12th, we had the Red River Dispatch Budget and Finance Committee Meeting, and we just reviewed the current year-to-date budget, was pretty much all, all that was done at that particular meeting. That afternoon, we had the pick meeting, which the primary purpose of that was the continued discussion on the early retirement incentive program. I do want to bring up another thing that came out of those discussions and something that I think Darren brought up that we're going to probably have to be looking at in the future, and that's the, the impacts the Paid Family Leave Act has on our sick policy. So I, you know, I think that's something that we're going to have to be looking at that going forward and how that all correlates together. And on Thursday, the 13th, I had the Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting, and we were talking about the different positions that are up. I think we, there's four positions that are going to be up for that board this year, and there's four candidates, and there's an additional candidate from the Morehead Public Schools that are going to be on there. So it's likely that Lakes Country Service will have two members of the Morehead School District on their board, as well as myself from the county. And then on the 14th, we, yes, or Friday morning, we also had the flood mitigation update again with the Chamber, and I said on that, there was a lot of planning that was involved with that one for the trip that Commissioner Mojo and others took yesterday, where they had a meeting with the Governor Walz, and so we're thankful for all of you that participated and took that trip for that purpose. I'm sorry that I wasn't, not able to attend the Township Officers Meeting, and that, I believe, concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 4th, I participated in Highway Tracking, which has been well-covered. Also participated in the County Owned Lands Meeting on the, that afternoon. I met with Darren and Mr. Milton in regards to some union negotiations. On the 5th, participated at the United Way Taco Bar. The juvenile center staff donate all of the food there, and every year, it's, it's amazing, so appreciate.
Did you eat it?
Huh?
Did you eat or did you participate?
Oh, I participated. By eating. And on the, on the 5th, participated in a meeting with Dan, Dan Molly, Derek LaPointe Peyton in regards to the Wired Nation Discussion. On the 6th, participated in the IAGR Meeting, which has been well covered. That afternoon, had meetings with Darren, our Labor, Labor Attorney with Union Negotiations. On the, that afternoon, met with Lori on some ongoing budget discussions. On the 7th, Lori and I met. We had our closing wire confirmation call for the refinancing of the, of the law enforcement correctional facility bond. That was completed last week. On the 7th, also participated in our Legislative Lobby Call. It's been well covered. The flood mitigation check-in with, where we discussed the Senate Bonding Tour preps. And that afternoon, and also on Monday, participated in the Public Health Screening Director, Screening Director's Interviews. On the 12th, I had Clay County Management. We had budget discussions. We heard updates from Kimberly on the judicial security legislation. And also, she's been working on a credit card payment system to collaborate with all of our departments to, to be more consistent. And I had some HR updates. On the 12th, Matt Jacobson, Derek LaPointe, and I met with Kyle Roman, Representative from Orion Strategies. I did provide you guys a handout in your, in your boxes. DG Midstream purchased, purchased a pipeline from Oak One. And they just wanted to make their, make an introduction and know that they're in our, in our county. Again, the 12th, we had our Legislative Meeting, which has been well covered. I've been working with MMB to receive the $1.2 million that the Legislature awarded for our PRTF remodel. And so we got some information on that, just a little bit more data. And that should be coming soon. We got some timelines of when we can utilize those funds. And with good news of, of a ability to go to Legislature to ask for a no-cost extension. I participated in the Bonding Tour at the, at the Juvenile Center. I think as, as was, as been talked about, that was an exciting day. There's a lot of positive feedback that we received, which was wonderful. I think that the other thing that, to some of the comments that were made, I think it's important why facilities use this is because of the programming, but it's because of the investment that this board made. And it goes back 10 years ago, when other facilities were stepping back, you guys were stepping into it. And that's made all of the difference. We found out this morning that we, we are, we are on the MIAC agenda for their quarterly, quarterly meeting next week, or two weeks, I guess. And they've supported our PRTF plan moving forward and are looking forward to an update. So that was nice to see. On the 13th and 14th, I participated in the AMC Futures Conference down in St. Paul. We heard presentations on PAC, Property Tax Reform Ideas. There's about 20 different states that are looking at different funding sources. And so we heard from Julie Ring's counterparts in Texas and Florida. We had an update from Matt Hilgard on federal shutdown. Again, we are now, we're now budgeted through the end of January. The positive news is that both SNAP and WIC, which you heard presentations on last time we were here at Board, are actually funded through September. And so if there are any issues, we won't have that same, same challenge moving forward. We heard, we heard from economic development programming ideas from Itasca County. And that was a good, a good conference. Appreciate the opportunity to be there. I participated yesterday in the Township Officers Meeting. Again, appreciate our staff for coming out and sharing, sharing the different things happening at the county. And yesterday afternoon, met with Darren and Anna on a series of issues. Just of note, this, this week is Minnesota Winter Hazard Awareness Week. Everyone from in the county would have received an email from Gabe talking about some of the dangers that we're, we'll be facing probably shortly. And just a couple of other things. Today's the 16th Annual County Campus Craft and Sales Boutique over at the Family Service Center. And Taco in a Bag will be served over lunch. We do have interviews for the Public Health Director starting this afternoon at 1:00. And just wanted to provide an update based on your action today on shifting $100,000 of, of cost from Quinn's budget that brought our levy down to 4.64%. And that concludes my report.
Great work.
All right. Thank you. Steve, Brian, anything for us? Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. November 4th, County-Owned Lands Committee. I also attended that. Also, on the 4th, had a discussion with Steve, Brian, and myself on attorney's negotiations. November 5th, worked on a report for Mark Sloan. Legislative Planning Meeting with our lobbyists. And I met with Cory and Ashley on some score funding, trying to find the calculations for that. November 6th, I had the Highway Third, Highway's Third Negotiations and also the Attorney's Negotiations. Had a meeting with MCC on improv project that we've been working on. November 7th, worked on updating all the negotiation status sheets. And PRTF Legislative Meeting with the Representative from Amy Klowichar's office. November 10th, I participated in the Public Health Director Interviews as well. 11th, I was off for Veterans Day. Then November 12th, I also attended the Managers Meeting and had the Corrections Fourth Negotiations and attended the PIC Meeting. November 13th, Senate Bonding Tour. I participated in that as well. November 14th, we had Detox's Fourth Negotiations and Social Workers Fourth Negotiations. And November 17th, I, yesterday, attended the Township Meeting as well and had a meeting with Kimberly and Lori on some, establishing how we can do some online payments. So we are, we are making progress with the union negotiations, which is good. I sent an email to everybody, I think, yesterday, kind of an update on that. And last but not least, open enrollment closes tomorrow. So if you haven't done your open enrollment yet, please do it today. Or tomorrow, I guess. And that's all I have.
Right. Sarah, do you have anything for us?
Mr. Larson, from the calendar standpoint, what, when are we, when have we decided that we're going to be dealing with the, setting the levy?
We are, we're having truth and taxation on December 16th at 6:00 PM. And then we would be setting the preliminary levy on December 23rd.
All right. And we are planning on a meeting December 30th as well?
That's correct. The board made, made that action so the under-treasurers' office could make their final payments.
Okay, very good. One, one question, one question to that. Can we make that final levy on the 30th? Or, I mean, if we don't decide on the 23rd, is the 30th another day? Or are we going to decide on the 23rd?
Yeah. My understanding is, yeah, you can, as long as you make it prior to the end of the year.
All right.
I would certainly hope that by the 23rd, we're ready to deal with this.
We'd hope so.
One way or the other.
All right. We're adjourned.